We have all of our councilors except Scott Ohm with us today. We have Councilor Nosler Beck with us, joining us online, but I think Mr. Ohm hopefully will be here shortly. We will start our meeting as we generally do with public comment on any item on the agenda. But I'm going to hold for a second. We have some feedback going on somewhere.
Do I need it?
You can mute it.
Yeah, yeah, I muted.
All right, so. We'll be. We'll get our audio squared away here in just a second. Okay, sound okay? You can hear me? Okay, good. So, thank you. We will start our meeting with public comment on items that are on the agenda. And our first speaker is Kia Ruiz and John McMillan on deck. Oh, yes, if you'd come to the podium and if you'd give us your first name and last name, spell your last name and an address, you'll be ready to roll.
Good evening, Mayor Starker, city council members, city staff and city leadership. My name is Kia Ruiz, last name is R-U-I-Z, 10259 West 72nd Place in Orvada. I'm here today to talk about, let's reach you all before you do your study session on affordable housing. My children, they attend Mountain Phoenix Community School in Wheat Ridge, and it's at the corridor of I-70 in Kipling. For some of you may know, this is kind of a problem area. It's across the street from Fruitdale Park, and it's in the area with nine motels. And I'd say like those children and the adults have increasingly been exposed to people in mental health crises. We've been finding illicit drug paraphernalia, freebasing material, ID drug use material. We've been seeing a lot of law enforcement looking like they're sweeps. But it's the sad realities of this humanitarian economic crisis that we're all having to face right now. So my public comment to you all is as you go into your study session, please consider looking at it with a multi-department approach. That's one thing I've reached out to some of you and city leadership about. I want to know what the multi-department approach is because siloing it towards one department that's under-resourced, expecting them to solve everything isn't really going to help out. I know the city did a proclamation for affordable housing awareness in 2018. I don't know how much traction has gone forward. I don't know what tonight's specifics are about, if it's about professionals that can't afford to live in the area or people unhoused and in crises. But these are all interconnected. And if you can find how the interconnection also goes with all these departments, that can be very helpful. And I know that area also overlaps with Orvada PD, and Jeff Coe also has people out there. So just consider that. And when I ask for that, when I talk to city leadership and I say, what's the multi-department approach? I would love to hear how you're all coordinating and potentially even see a Venn diagram or something like a flow chart to know how you're all trying to work together instead of just pointing towards the homeless advocate and saying, this under-resourced person has it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John McMillan and, no, you can take it off, please, at the podium. John McMillan and Susan McMillan on deck.
Hello, my name is John McMillan. As most of you know, Susan and I live on a property that some have called non-conforming. I'll be speaking tonight about Agenda Item Two and particularly the Addendum One concerning non-conforming properties. In question is the barn and carriage house that sits on the hill above Everett School on 38th Avenue. After 20 years there, we still love the property, but uncertainties about its legality and its future make it hard to accurately appraise its value and confidently plan for our future. We're different from almost every other property owner and developer who comes before you because we're not asking to build anything or expand anything or even demolish anything. We're only trying to ratify the status quo in our property as built at the present time as allowed by the zoning in place. We're asking for full R2 rights, not an ADU. That's a case, I think, with most of these non-conforming properties. Owners just want to normalize their situation and avoid uncertainties. So these cases shouldn't bring the same level of uncertainty and newness to you and controversy as the ADU and SDR issues, STR issues, which do alter current living and development patterns. Therefore, I'd encourage you to consider setting aside the non-conforming issue for prompt action before you dig into the more complex implications of ADUs. It's really a separate issue with some overlap. The non-conforming research criteria given in the staff memo at Addendum One looks workable and fair. I'd also ask that you consider the eight standard zoning criteria used in zoning, judging rezonings. In our case, our use of the property was compliant with all of these. The lot is big enough with enough parking and separation from neighbors to hold a duplex or more. If the city recognized it as a duplex but detached, it would be completely compliant with R2 criteria. We're speaking tonight to defend our family home where we've lived a third of our lives. It's our largest investment and asset as we face retirement. That's a stakes for us, but I'm also speaking to defend historic property. This is one of Wheat Ridge's original homestead grants, part of five acres that ran all the way down to the creek in 1896. There's been a lot of history passing here. From 1940 to 1980, this was home to a local veterinarian. His clinic was in the barn. His son went off to Italy and died flying a fighter plane in World War II. I still have their letters. Doc Cooley was the Jeff Coe Commissioner when he held a secret meeting in the barn with the school board conducting official business. The Sentinel newspaper published an exposé that became part of the case for the Colorado Sunshine Law. In the 90s, the barn was in property were home to a successful local artist, Tom Taylor, who kept his painting studio. There's a good case for historic designation here. And I'd rather see that than wholesale redevelopment. This property is a distinctive and familiar local landmark, and I'm intending to preserve it from redevelopment. However, if my acre can accommodate no more than one small dwelling, a thousand-square-foot farmhouse that has not been challenged, it would no longer be economically viable to keep it as it is for long. In general, what makes cities and old buildings viable is to gradually change, adopt and grow to meet new needs and circumstances. Yes, our barn was converted into a residence over time by other people in the same way that the entire city has been gradually converted from a farmland to a suburb. We'll never be a planned community of utter uniformity. Better that we be what we are, a hybrid residential community with rural roots, with diverse but well-regulated buildings and dwellings. Please move ahead with the non-conforming process that favors these values. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Susan Diller. And I failed to mention that you have three minutes for your presentation. And let's see, the green light goes on when you start after you've introduced yourself. And I think it starts to flash at 30 seconds, and at 15, it goes to orange. And when it turns red, it's time to wrap it up.
I should stop.
Thanks so much.
John told a good part of the story. I'm Susan McMillan at the same address, 9801 West 38th Avenue. And I just wanted to comment a little bit on the emotional impact of what happened to us because we're very happy to see you considering this code change, putting this process in place for non-conforming properties. We lived, we moved into this particular property in 2000, and we live in the barn. We rent out the farmhouse. This arrangement was very happy for everyone involved. We did it very openly until 2017, when there was a big hailstorm and we applied for a building permit to replace the roofs on both houses. And the response to our, in addition to the building permit, was a letter from the city giving us 60 days to subdivide or evict from the property. We protested, and the response was direct letters from several members of council as well as the mayor ordering us to vacate our property immediately. When we looked at the possibility of subdivision, the cost of subdivision exceeded the value that the increase that the subdivision would bring. And it was very expensive, in excess of $100,000. And at that time, our daughter was about to go off to college. We were forced to make the decision, do we try to subdivide, do we send our daughter to college? Very, very stressful. We did get a lawyer. The lawyer worked on our behalf to try and adjudicate our case, get some sort of waiver. We were met with a lot of false accusations from council, which we were able, later able to refute. We were accused of doing all kinds of illegal development. None of that was true. We submitted to an inspection by the City Building Department, health and safety inspection. They found no violations, no problems with health and safety. And in fact, they found the building permits for most of the work we had done already taped to the equipment that we had had installed. So that disputed much of what they had claimed. However, after that inspection, the city went dark. We never heard what the result was. We never had any process to move forward. And we've been working with new council members. We're very happy to see you get to this point. This was a very painful experience for us, emotionally and financially stressful. We need to do some expensive maintenance on the house, which we are hesitant to do until we know whether we're going to have to evict from the property or be able to legalize. So we applaud your efforts, your study, and encourage you to move forward on this so other Wheat Ridge residents don't have to go through what we went through as things change, as they inevitably do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Those are all of the speakers that I have signed up to speak. Is there anyone here who was not able to sign up, who would like to speak on an item on tonight's agenda? You may do so now, and I'm going to go and see if there's anyone online in our Zoom format. If you would like to speak on any item, please raise your hand. We'll bring you into the meeting. And I'll look to the clerk and see, do we have anyone, anyone with their hands raised online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll close our citizens' right to speak, and we will go to our first item, which is number one, and affordable housing. And I will go to Mr. Goff. Do you have a, we have a presentation on this one.
We do. Thank you, Mayor. This item was brought forward by Councilmembers Hoppy and Nosler Beck. And if you remember, this was on an agenda several, a couple of months ago, I believe, and we went late on some other items. And this was too important to do at late hours. So we rescheduled, and Susan Powers was kind enough to come back. So Susan Powers is here this evening. She's president of Urban Ventures. They, Urban Ventures offers a variety of consulting services in real estate and community development. Urban Ventures focuses on healthy places, resilient communities, affordable housing and adaptive reuse, and is deeply committed to building quality projects that address the rising demands of affordable housing. So with that, I will turn it over to Susan. She does have a PowerPoint presentation.
Do you want to stand or sit? Do you want to stand? Are you back? Stand at the podium, certainly.
Thank you very much.
What's that?
Oh, yeah.
Close enough? Okay, there we go.
Good, thank you. Thank you all for the invitation to be here tonight. Is that working? Yeah, I mean, it's loud enough, right? I'm probably not going to tell you 100 things that you don't already know tonight. So, but I think it's a good thing to be reminded of what's going on in the market these days and the impact that the increasing costs are having on people that live in your community. I've worked primarily in Denver, and I can tell you that the issues there, I mean, they're the same everywhere. Doing some work on a project in Pueblo. And while they're not as bad there because costs are as high, they still have an issue with affordable housing. So this is, you're not alone here, but it doesn't make you feel any better because you're hearing from your constituents and your friends and your relatives and the kids of your friends who can't afford to live in the town they were born in. And that's certainly the situation I'm sure that you're dealing with here. So what I'm going to do is just kind of run through a little bit about the situation as far as we know, that I know, in terms of what's going on in Jefferson County. And we don't have Wheat Ridge-specific information where we have that. We've included it in here. But if you look at the average rent that lower-income households can afford, these are just, and I like to look to make sure that I, that I always put the income in. And if you took, take that income of $25,000 and you divide that in half and you take a couple digits off, it's the hourly rate. So this is minimum wage. If someone who earns $25,000 a year, they're in a minimum wage job. And that allows them to afford a $641 a month rent. I'm going to talk about homeownership as well as rental, but starting with, I think, the most impacted are people that are trying to rent. So keep in mind, as you're looking at these, the rental rates that different people at different incomes can afford. And then we'll compare that to what you have in the marketplace here. Because you, you know, the disconnect is that the housing stock, it's not that it's not getting built. It's just that it's getting built at rates that people at these income levels, at your, basically your workforce cannot afford. The rent ranges that you show here, this is what is represented specifically in Wheat Ridge. The percentages that are renting in each one of these, at these levels. So you can see, you know, the majority of them are $1,000 to $2,000 a month for rent. Go back to the previous page, you know, someone that's making minimum wage can afford $641. So there, you know, if you have, and I'm not saying you can, that's why a minimum wage is probably not a livable wage to begin with, but that's a different conversation. But if you have a lot of service workers here, you have a lot of retail in your community, which you do, that, they can't afford to pay the rent that's here. Now, let's look at the, and I, well, I'm leaving this for you so you can go through them. I'm not going to repeat each one. Let's look at the homeownership situation. The average Wheat Ridge home price is $550,000, which for those of us that have been in the metro area for a long time, you know, the decades, decades, these numbers are just ridiculous, right? Except to a broker, right? But they're, you know, these are, Denver's not that much higher than this, but it's, they're just ridiculous numbers for all of us that bought houses and started at $85,000 per house and then up to $115,000, and you know, and on and on. But for the average people to look at that amount, it's pretty mind-boggling. And in order to afford that and have this monthly cost, you have to have an income of $90,300. But the average income here is $57,000, and you can afford a $317,000 house. So where are people buying, where are people finding houses that they can afford then? And that's, and that is a couple hundred thousand dollar difference in price. Not all doom and gloom. I'll try to give us some hope here, too. But these are the concerns about homeownership. The home prices went up 13.4% in one year. And this is during, you know, this is during COVID, right? So, and I think this number here is pretty similar to what happened in the metro area. But it's a pretty big increase. And then incomes certainly never, didn't go up to meet that range, only went up 3%, 3.2%. There have been some no-growth ordinances. Certainly what Lakewood did was not something that was helpful to the market by limiting the number of building permits that could be issued. So some of that was, that made it, that compounded it. But there are a lot of other things that compounded it, certainly in the last year with COVID and the supply chain issues and the fact that there's not a workforce here to build the houses, even if we could keep up with it and come up with the supplies. So let's keep going on and looking at who needs it. So to put a face on this, not a real face, but to give you just a reminder of who the people are, what are the positions people hold in the city that average earnings would fit into different area median income. And I'll, you know, the jargon of this is a little, can get a little bit annoying, so I appreciate that. I'll try not to do that. But area median income is the way people, the way the federal government and CHAF and local governments generally talk about the income levels that are eligible for publicly subsidized housing, one way or another. So it's generally under 30% of the area median income is who foothills regional housing addresses. And then they go up from there, and we'll talk about one project that we've been involved with where they had a higher range. But most traditional public housing authorities, you address the 30% area median income and below. So that captures, whether it's through the housing authority or someone else, that captures housing for the homeless and people that are at the poverty level. Then you get to the positions I was talking about that are really paying somewhere around minimum wage. And this is what they can afford as you go up into the dental assistance, the 60%, 80% AMI. And then, and you'll see schoolteachers are at the $58,720, the average amount there in the 80% category. It includes a couple of different examples of that. Again, your median income of Wheat Ridge fits into that at $52,747. So what happens then when people can't afford to live in housing? There are several different ways that government steps in. Local government, you know, your political will is very important. You can't put a dollar value on that, but having a city council that's interested in addressing this issue is really important. I can't emphasize that enough. Funding, rental assistance, zoning, how you treat entitlements, how you deal with density bonuses if you want to get involved with that. Discounted land, expedited permanent approvals, these are all things that you can control. The state has additional, and this is, I'm saying this kind of outside of the ARPA funds and the one-shot issues, funding sources that you have access to now, which are wonderful because they're needed now more than ever. But in general, the state has funding that makes up some of the gap in these projects when you need to, when they need to be built. State tax credits, housing tax credits step in as well. Federal level, there are programs that get funded that address special populations. There's a program for veterans that are homeless in particular, and they're one population that's being focused on in a project in Orvada that I can talk about for a minute. Home funds, you probably have access to those as well now, and vouchers. And the Longcom Housing Tax Credit Program, which is administered through CHAF, but is federally authorized, is probably the most important one that's available for rental assistance to make the economics of a project work because it brings in private capital as equity in a project. Lots of acronyms here of just who all the project partners are. We're involved in the development of two affordable housing projects now. And as I look at this list, every one of these, every one of these groups is involved in different ways in each project. And it's the difficulty and the challenge is to, how do you create that capital stack that fills that gap? Because the gap keeps rising as construction costs go up. The gap keeps rising as land costs go up. And the income isn't rising, so you still have people that can only afford a certain amount of their income, their gross income, to pay for rent, but the costs of these buildings continue to go up. So all of these partners are really critical ones, and they're, and you know, they're there because this is their mission as much as anything else. This is a development that I believe, Mayor, you were at the, yes, you were at the groundbreaking for this. So we've been the development partner with the foothills regional housing. Got to get their name right these days, all this rebranding that goes on. And it's a great development that you provided, you put your private activity bond commitment into. And I think we had, I've never been to a groundbreaking where there were so many mayors in my life. So it's really great because Jefferson County has a really wonderful working relationship among its elected officials. And this is an example of the kind of project that can happen with that. So this is just south of Old Town and 100 units. And there are vouchers which will make, pays the difference in the income that someone can afford when you put 30% of their income into housing and what it really costs that are focused on veterans. So there'll be some amount of that. It's also, it's also has special vouchers for kids that are aging out of foster care. And that makes it really unusual. So there are lots of populations that will be served. It's under construction now. And it's a great, great project for the community. And it's, it was just one of those great experiences for all of us involved with it that there was no opposition, which just never happens in Denver. I can tell you that. And in most other communities, it's not just Denver. So congratulations to you all for being part of that. So one of the things that I was asked to talk about is the missing middle. Because you have subsidies that help, maybe not enough on the homeless side because it's still a huge problem, but in terms of the housing authority programs that deal with a certain income level. And then you have market rate that people, most people in this room can afford to pay. And then you have this middle, which is not fitting into it. Make too much money for this program and not enough money for that, to qualify for that. So there are different kinds of homeownership models. It's harder on the rental side for that, I think, because the priority is always going to be on the populations that have the highest need, and that's going to be the lowest income. And we deal with this constantly and have arguments about it at the city, city of Denver always, because there's so much focus on the homeless, which we all care about deeply, but if we don't pay attention to the continuum of needs, then when you solve someone's problem here, there is nowhere for them to go. And then they're back, you know, where they were. So we, and I think the same thing happens with homeownership. I think it's within my company, over the last 23 years, we've built more affordable for sale than we have rental, much more. And I've done that because I really believe that it's important for people to have. Not everybody wants to be a homeowner, and especially this next generation apparently doesn't care about that as much as we did. But it's still important to have that opportunity for people. And the way you do it, it's as complicated, but with a different set of tools that are there. And what has been done, and that we've been involved with the most are deed-restricted units. I have a development that has, and I'll go through some of them that we've done, that you can see how different ones have been approached. But you have to deed restrict them. You have to put, you have to be able to say, and to the buyers of it, you're getting a home that is coming in. You're getting a home that is coming in that's much less expensive than the market. And we don't want you to just the next week or the next year, even in five years, to go out, sell it at market, have that profit all be yours. And then we don't have that unit as an affordable unit anymore. So it's, you know, it can get controversial. The city of Denver is now going back to the inclusionary housing ordinance, which I don't believe you have one here. It just requires that if you're building, and they've lowered it now to, I think, seventy units or more. Then, you know, ten percent of the units have to be affordable. So, you know, if you think about it being, that's obviously just one unit. But, you know, when you get up to the, the side, the numbers of units that are being built in Denver, you know, a three hundred unit, and this is apartments or condos. Three hundred units, then you would, then you'd have thirty units that are affordable and they're deed restricted, and they're making them forever. So we have lots of, lots of my developer friends who are, who are freaking out about this and think everybody, that all these developments are going to leave Denver and you know, da, 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 stuff, which I don't believe. But it's, it's, it's the only way that, you know, you can make them happen. Because the private sector is not going to build affordable units that rent for X if they can rent them for X plus one. And so the, the, the issue here is that you can figure out the amount of affordability requirement. It still allows a market level profit to be made. And you should be subsidizing it if you're requiring someone to build it where they're not getting a market rate. But you don't have to be, you know, you can, you don't have to have a community that is guaranteeing a, a profit that is way out there for someone. When, when you have a need for, for, for affordable housing. So that again is another thing you can have all kinds of philosophical discussions about. Because there are, right now in our country, I mean, there's no limit on profit. And so, and I, you know, I, I'm a private developer, I have partners, we, I have to look at the bottom line. I, you know, and we have, we have made, we have made a profit on all the projects we've developed. Could we have made five percent more or twenty percent more probably? But we had a threshold and ours was a market threshold. And we said, it's our responsibility in a community to give back as well and to address some of the community needs. And that means that if it lowers what, what we could be getting, I'm okay with that. Now, you know, it's not thirty percent less. I mean, we're talking increments, you know, a couple, a couple percent or five percent. But that is what inclusionary zoning does, it requires a certain percentage to be affordable. Increased density is important. I have to say that when I sat until nine thirty, when you're less, when I did listen to, there was a, a long public hearing on a townhome project. And I thought, my God, if I come in here talking about a hundred unit projects and giving them a density bonus of, of another ten percent, you'll, you'll throw me out. So I don't know where the community is on density, but you have a great opportunity with Lutheran campus. To really focus on, if you want to address affordability, you want them to address affordability, then what does your zoning say about that? And if you want to give additional density to a developer that will put in some affordable units in it. That's a way that doesn't cost the city any money. And the developer can make the economics work better because they get an extra ten units. So it, it does work, it doesn't work in all, in all situations, but it can work in, in many. Let's see, density, and I don't, I don't know whether you have accessory dwelling units here yet. You all know what they are, accessory dwelling?
We'll talk about that next.
Are you? Okay, good. Well, they are, you know, the reason that they became as visible and as, as popular. And half of the city, I think, is, at this point, has been rezoned to allow them. Is that it's a way for homeowners to be able to afford to stay in their home and have an income from another unit behind them. It's not made for VRBO, I mean, hopefully it doesn't end up being abused that way, that that's a rental, a rental that's a nightly rental. But it really was, it started in West Denver where you had a lot of homeowners that had been there for generations. But they can't afford to stay there because the taxes are going up, whatever. So they, they were, they were allowed to build an accessory dwelling unit that gave them, and they got subsidized financing to do that, that allowed them to stay there. And it really became a way to continue to stabilize those neighborhoods that are getting gentrified a lot. Land trust model, have you had any contact with the Elevation Community Land Trust? So this is a, a group, I happen to sit on this board, so I can talk about it more. But it's, it's a group that was started about three years ago, a foundation funded with, I think, started out with a couple million dollars from about five different foundations. To go out and purchase land in the same way that the Urban Land Conservancy does, but specifically for single family affordable development. And so we've gone out and bought land, we've bought units when they came up on the market, our first units were actually in Aurora. Done a lot of work in Denver, we're up in, in Fort Collins. And then the land is owned by the Elevation Community Land Trust forever. So when you're looking at the cost of the house, you don't have any land costs in it. That person who buys the house pays a, a nominal amount for, look, the land lease, I mean, basically the ground lease. So they're paying elevation, whatever, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars a month for the ground. But they have a single family home and some, we've done some duplexes, but mostly single family. And they are, the prices are down at the, what people can afford it, at like the seventy to eighty percent of the area median income. So someone that is, that's a teacher can afford it, and someone who is a firefighter. And it's a great model, it's, it's been, I mean, our goal is to have a thousand units within the community land trust by twenty twenty-seven. We just had our own board retreat last week. So, and it, and it's, and it's getting a lot of interest from, again, from foundations. We have matching funds that have come from cities to do this. We have some land that's, you know, land that's being donated by cities because it is perpetually affordable. If people want to move out, then there's a split in the profit. I mean, they get the, they get some of the value because you don't want to put people in a position where they can never, they can never leave either. Very much the same as with Habitat. Habitat is now, Habitat Metro Denver is now, has now merged with another land trust group. And they're doing, I, I think the mayor's mentioned, you went out, that the metro mayors went out, so it wasn't the city council. Went out to the ARIA Denver Development. And that is all in the land trust. So all twenty-eight units there are part of Habitat's land trust. So the cost of those units doesn't reflect the cost of the house, I mean, of the land that's within it. Cohousing model, I mean, is, is another one, we can talk about if you have that kind of an interest. And it, but this is the, the home price of three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars is what at the average income someone can earn, can, can afford. Who lives in, in your community that is in that price range, which is what your median price range is. All right, what makes it hard? I mentioned this already, the development costs. And even if you're not an evil developer, and, and you know, we're not all evil developers. There's some, but we're not all. You know, we, we have not been able to control the cost of lumber, of steel, of doorknobs or anything, anything having to do with it. We can't, you know, no one can tell us when it's going to be delivered. We have a project up on the ARIA campus that has been delayed for six months now. It's completely done, twenty-four condo units in a building if you first pulled in, because they can't get the cabinets. And it's a local cabinet maker, but they can't get the wood. And it's just these, the story is, and it's, this is, you know, this is really been in the last year and a half. It's not, this is, hopefully this settles down a little bit, but it's still going on now. So the margins, the profit margins are much slimmer if you have all those uncertainties and the costs are higher. So the gap financing, to make up that gap, it gets, it gets higher and higher. And, and the state happens to have funding now because of the ARPA funds. And they're increasing their funding for the gap as well as the city of Denver, at least in the, in the projects we're involved with. Construction defect issues is another one. And it's, you know, it's, this is, really applies to multifamily, more, more than single family units. Even though what I'm hearing is it's beginning to move into the single family realm too, which is just mind boggling. But it's, it just, and it's not that we shouldn't protect people from having, from living, from buying a place if there's a bad builder. If, if not, it's not the bad builder, it's usually something happened during construction and it happens. I mean, and I had it happen on a project. And I, I went to the insurance company and said, you know, this is, we got to fix this. And we actually did a settlement where they paid without one lawyer involved. So that was like, that was a success. But it does happen, I mean, you know, we had a product that failed, some siding. And, but in general, this is, it caught, the cost of this is adding five percent to a project, the cost of insurance. And it's, you know, it sounds small, but they just keep adding up and then, and then it becomes impossible to make it, to make it work. And the last one is, is that people will say, well, why bother, why do this if it's that much harder? Just build, build market rate housing. So I'll just run through a couple, a couple of projects. So this is Monarch Mills, which is, and these are not, not recent since by any means impacted by COVID. This is a deed restricted for twenty years, fifty-six of the sixty-nine units. It's in the plat, it's in, in, in Central Platte Valley, it's right behind the Museum of Contemporary Art in, off of, off of Delgenee and Fifteenth. I actually live there, I developed it, I live there. And it's a great place to live because we live in, in one of the unrestricted units. But the, it's just like normal people living there, you know, we have a firefighter, we have a librarian, it's like real people live there. It's not like so many of the high-end ones in Denver and downtown that are, that are investor units and people come down from Vail. And it's not, that's not the case in, in all of them, but it's in the case in a lot of them. We were, in order to make the economics work here, Mark Falcone, who is the developer that did Belmar and has done a lot of other developments. He, he has been very involved with the Museum of Contemporary Art, wanted to buy property and donate it to them. He wanted a place for that to be. And so he bought, he was buying the whole block from East West Properties. And East West smartly said, well, we have an affordable housing requirement, we'll sell it to you, but you have to take our requirement. And then he called me and said, so how do I do that? And by the end of the conversation, I said, I'll do it. So we, so he donated that land, land to us. He, we split the cost fifty fifty on underground parking because that parking is very expensive, but we're right downtown and we, we needed it. And, you know, and so we ended up with this really interesting little development with thirteen townhomes. And he lives in one of them and we have the Museum of Contemporary Art there and then, and then sixty-nine units behind it. And it's, it's complicated and it takes more time to do them, but it, you know, for some reason I, I like to do that. Fireclay Lofts is another one that's in, up in Rhino, it's a hundred and sixty-six units. We did twenty percent of them deed restricted. And this is one of the lessons learned on these kinds of things is the de restrictions. All of a sudden, you sit back and you say, well, let's see, it's twenty, this one was fifteen years, and they expired. And we thought, you know, when we first did it, we thought, is anybody going to live here? And we said, oh, I don't know. And, and then all of a sudden, the time goes by and, and that's the case for all of Denburs, is that they're all going to expire. And so we have, we're dealing with ways that we can, the city can buy back some of the, the units and, and we'll see. Next is the one that your mayor was, was touring, up in the right-hand upper corner, it says Habitat. Whatever it says, I can't read it, Habitat, something like that. Anyway, so it's a little neighborhood there, twenty-eight units. And this is, this is a former convent, it was the Saint Fran, Mary Chris convent, but Sister's is Saint Francis. And I started working with them, this is the other part of the story is how long these things take, sixteen, sixteen years ago. And it's been, it's just about built out now, we have one more development here that has one more site. And it will end up, and it was very consciously a mixed income community from the beginning. I mean, that's what we wanted to create, it's what the sisters wanted. You know, I had this great conversations with them because I didn't grow up Catholic. And I thought, you know, how am I ever going to do this with these women, right? And they said the same thing about me as a developer, they said, how are we ever going to deal with her? And we found out that our values were very similar. We didn't want a gated community, you know, we wanted, we didn't want Walmart as much as, you know, that, that would be, or Costco, that would have been an option. And we really wanted this to be a community that had people that, that were very different. And we also wanted to be focused on health. So we had a, a, with, we're right across the street from Regis University, had a very close relationship with them along the way with their health sciences program. And we ended up going together to Color Health Foundation and got close to a million dollar grant from them to do all kinds of cool stuff that was health focused. So there is a one acre production farm here, we have a greenhouse. There's a walk, a couple mile walk that's, you know, has all kinds of interesting things that goes through, through the Regis campus. We have adult fitness equipment. And for the first four years, we had a, a healthy living coordinator that, that offered yoga classes in Spanish and English and all kinds of stuff. To get people more activated and get, get, for people to know each other. The red building is the Cohousing Community, which is a former convent. And that is a condominium project, but it's with, with a, a very, very close relationship between the people. People that move into that want to know their neighbors' birthdays and their grandchildren's. And, and they have dinner together every Sunday. And it's a, it's a really interesting place for people to live if you want to be that close to each other. Everybody has their own units, they have their own kitchens and all that, but it's still a very, it's a really nice form of, of living for, for some folks. So the, the, all the Habitat units are at, I think, seventy, seventy-five percent, seventy-five, at, at the seventy-fifth percentile, AMI percentile. So, and three of them were closing in a couple of weeks. And that's been a great, it's been a great experience. And we thank your mayor for being a contractor again. Because we need people that know what they're doing there. Because I always felt like when we went there with, with all my friends, everything had to get redone the next day. But I'm sure that they appreciated your, your work, but that's, that's great. And then the building that says Warren Village First Step is a program that's starting, that's been around for a while. But it's for women coming right off the street that are homeless with their children. And it only, it only accommodates twenty-one people, but it's now, starting in January, it is a really cool partnership with Florence Crittenden. Which is a program that DPS started many, many years ago for, for girls that get pregnant in high school to help to make sure that they still get their education and get through. So we're going to have moms, young moms and babies living here, which is great for me because I love babies. So I like to go over, I'll literally over there holding the babies. And, and then we have a lot of market rate units here, the units on the right-hand side, the Mark, Mary Chris Apartments. And the ARIA Apartments are low income housing tax credit projects. So they're at the thirty to sixty percent area median income, so there are a hundred and thirty of them. Some of the people that, that live there are employees at Regis. So when you talk about who all these people are, they're, they're, they're us, you know, they're us. So it's a really interesting mix here. And, and our, I think at the end of the day, I mean, when the last phase is, the last building is built, we'll have over five hundred units here. And we will have, I should have this number in my head, but about forty percent of them will have been, will be affordable. So that's, and you can see the, the, the farm, you can actually see our mayor leaning over. And, and it's the Father Fitzgibbons is there as well. So just a sample of some of the development that's there, it's the, there. So what can we do now? So this is probably the most important part of the conversation. And I understand that you got a grant from the state, so the number for, the number one, you're on your way developing a strategic plan and that's great. And, you know, that will define how you want to deal with, with these issues. Preserving affordability, existing affordability, using the land trust model. If the city has any extra land, any excess land, or if CDOT has any land that's in your city, you know, knock on their door. The land trust ha, I mean, the, the state land board has it, they, they have been involved with two affordable housing developments. I don't know where they're, whether they have any land holdings here, but they, they're interested in this. I mean, the governor has been very clear with state agencies that he doesn't want land just sitting around anymore, or, or OTV. They're a little harder to, to deal with right now, but they, but they have plenty of land. And I, and, and trying to get it into some kind of a setting that is perpetual. I mean, that, that will stay affordable for a long time. Partnerships, you're doing that now with the hospital. You know, we've had conversations with, with Denver Health about a building that they are moving out of into a new building. And said, don't tear that building down, use it for employee housing. And that, those are, those will be conversations that I have no idea, both of my grandchildren, two of my, my two little girls were born at Lutheran. So I remember the campus, but I don't know what the condition of any of the buildings and whether they're going to clear them all or, or if, you know, if maybe they don't need to do that. It's a lot more expensive to build a new unit than to take an existing building and make it work. But not all the time can you, can you get the density you need. So all of these other things, the incentives, expedited city approvals, I'm sure that you don't have anybody that ever complains about how long it takes to get through the city, right? Community Development Director? But, you know, are, we- But, you know, are, we, in Denver, it's, it's pretty intense right now. And developments, I mean, you have a lot coming into you, into the city and we, we all are sensitive about that, but we all think our project's the most important and we don't understand why that one's not getting addressed. So fee waivers, all those things. And again, I said political support, which is really important. And funding to help fill the gap. You know, the city, I think, puts in, state puts in, they're going up to $35,000 a unit for each affordable unit that comes through. These are apartments that are going in for tax credits. They give vouchers. The city's, city of Denver is now creating a voucher program of its own. You know, you can be really creative with, with funds you have in the city if, you know, if this is one of your highest priorities. ADU development is your next topic. And, and oppose no growth ordinances, which I know if you have this kind of interest here today, you're not, that's probably not on your list. So that would, that's, those are the things that come to mind and maybe some of those will fit into your strategic plan. And hopefully you'll be one of those outstanding communities that says, this is how you do it because we need you. So, questions?
Thank you very much, Susan.
Yeah.
Very interesting presentation. And we'll let you sit down and we'll, maybe some questions from council and, Ms. Hobbie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Susan, thank you so much for your, for your presentation and also for being patient enough to come back to us. I know that was a long night to sit through, to be said, to be asked if you could come back at different times. So thanks for that. One of the things I wanted to ask you that you had mentioned is the, the construction defect line. I felt like that had some changes to it a couple of years ago that maybe we're going to encourage some developers to start building condos again.
Yeah.
Can you discuss that just real quick?
So what has never been addressed, which is that what is, makes it the most difficult is that in the state of Colorado, you don't have the right to repair. And without the right to repair, you don't, and for whatever reason, the legislature doesn't, well, it's not the legislature, it's the pressure that's put on to them from the attorneys that are, that are ramping up business to, to do this. But, you know, if you don't have the right to repair, then you are, then you're always going to have that risk that you're going to have a lawsuit. There were some changes that were made and there were, and there's a group of people that are, that are having conversations now about what can happen beyond that now. That, you know, whether this legislative session, people would be interested. But, you know, the first conversation I had with, with a member of legislature was, don't bring back anything on this, this year. It's not, nothing's going to get through. And I, I just, you know, I don't know what to say. So we're trying to think about what could the state do? What could, you know, the, the governor did the, what was it called? The, for the rural health, rural neighbor areas that couldn't get health insurance coverage, oh, the co-insurance program? So we thought, well, maybe, is there a way to do a, there's a state fund that takes some of the risk? You know, it's kind of a first, first risk pool that might lower the rates. But part of the issue also is that there are less and less insurance brokers, less than insurance companies that are providing the insurance. So even though the claims, I mean, I haven't heard of a claim in a long, long time, but they, they just, they're, they're not, they don't want to be in the business. So it's, it's still a problem. So the only way is to subsidize the rate, which doesn't mean, which annoys me a little bit because the insurance companies then are continuing to, to have, to get the full, full value there, but full cost. But we haven't really figured out another way of doing it. But one thing is, is that if you're building affordable condos, you're less likely to have claims because they're not million dollar condos that Antunes built. You know, so it's not like a nonprofit built developer who's building them or, or a for-profit that's building $200,000 condos has the deep pockets of someone else. So there's like a 92-unit, 100% affordable development that just opened up in, in, it's not Baker, but it's off Santa Fe Arts District area. Elevation Land Trust owns the land under it. And yeah, they bought insurance and they pay, it contributed to, to the cost of the overall project, but I think that's a less likely candidate for a lawsuit. And I'm saying this on TV, right? This is ridiculous. But it's, but I think it's just, that's not where trial lawyers want to spend their time. They're looking for the more expensive ones.
Thank you very much.
Additional questions? Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Susan, for coming and presenting to us. Could you explain a little bit more about how like the land trust works and maybe give like a concrete example of, like what partners came together, how the money was kind of brought in the pot and like?
Yep, sure. And this is the Elevation Community Land Trust, right? So it was about four years ago and it is a combination of Colorado Health Foundation, the Denver Foundation, Gates Family Foundation, Pat Strikers in, what's the Bohemian Foundation out of Fort Collins? And it was presented to them. The pitch was made really by Gary Williams, the Peton Foundation, by Sam Gary, that if we can't control, if, if we can't get affordable housing in our communities, then we're losing our workforce. And I mean, everybody knew that this was a problem and, and they came in and, and these are PRI investments on their part. They are, if ever, long-term. I mean, they expect them to be, since the land is there forever, their money is in the land, so it's not as if they don't have some collateral, but it really is an investment that will stay, stay there forever. And they were really interested in it and they continue to be. I mean, because this is, as this grows, we think we need 1,000 units to be self-sufficient. We need to build that up because then we can, then every penny that comes in, none of it goes for overhead. And we can then create even more housing. But it was, it was a, it's a model that is a national model. It's not so much a national model being used in housing the way this one is. Most of the land trust models are like the Urban Land Conservancy where there are large portions, large parcels of property that are purchased for some public purpose. And the idea there is, is that if, if you don't have a, somebody that has community interests and you let it be purchased by private sector, it will never have that community interest. And so the Urban Land Conservancy was formed maybe 15, 20 years ago, probably, probably 20 now, and was the first, the first version of that in Colorado, in Denver. And there are a number of buildings that are kind of nonprofit centers that ULC owns. They also bought a lot of, they bought land that was then, they were repaid by a developer that was building affordable units. And this, this one goes into it and there continues to also be a, a lot of touch with the residents. I mean, you want them to be successful, you want them to be able to, to manage their money and, and to stay in that home. So it is a little bit more hands-on than just building a unit and saying, here, have a nice life. Because people are at the, you know, they're, they're buying it at a, at an income level that, you know, something happens in their job and they could miss mortgages and that kind of thing. So there's a lot of, a lot of training and, you know, on management of the financing. But it all was financed, it was all set up. And then the city of Denver put in a chunk of money and city of Aurora matched for each unit. They came in with, I think, 25 or $50,000 a unit as well. So it's just kind of taking off in different places with different, different ways. So every, every community that has a conversation with Elevation ends up having a different kind of structure that works for that community.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I guess the direction my thought was going in is, you know, this was kind of local works when they were Wheat Ridge 2020. This was their initial goal was to buy houses with them and have them be affordable for homeowners in our community. And as we know, local works is sitting on a reserve at this point in time and we'll probably have a broader conversation about local works at, at some point or another. But it, it seems as if like we have, we would be doing ourselves a disservice if we don't tap into local works and maybe our Wheat Ridge Housing Authority to reactivate them and, and see what we can do in our community aside of just policymaking and legislating and doing deed restrictions, but also investing that money that local works has in their coffers back into the community.
And you can do this with existing.
And so that's kind of how I was wondering, like, would it be something where the city has land, local works has money?
Right.
And we can make it like that work.
And it also is, it's being, it can be used, and the first ones that we did were all existing homes. And went in Aurora, the prices were better than they were in Denver. And, I mean, now, now everything's pretty unaffordable, but, I mean, went in and bought six units in one neighborhood or on two different blocks and nobody, and no one, they were vacant anyway. And we renovated them and then we sold them and they stayed in the land trust model. And that's, and that, or you can go in with a homeowner who is eligible and do some renovation and, and if they agree to put it into the land trust, then, then you can actually pay for their, their renovation because they, we're paying for the land separately. So it is, I mean, it really, it really depends on the housing stock you have and what other resources you have, but it's, it's a, it, you know, it doesn't solve the whole problem, but it's a piece of it.
Additional questions? Mr. Ohm.
Yeah, I want to go back to the, the litigation condos. So has there ever been a discussion about the owners of the condos forfeiting their individual rights to sue and delegating a single entity akin to, you have apartments, there's typically one owner?
Well, that's what, it's one of the things that the legislature took away in the last session. They took away the rights of local, I mean, you can't go and ask a, you can't require someone who buys a unit to waive their rights. You can ask, but you can't require. So it was for many years, you know, you go in there and as part of the condominium declarations, you'd say, yes, and I, yes, and I do this, and I do this, and I waive my rights to this. And they felt that that was, that was taking away, without people really understanding what the implications were, that it was taking away their rights. So I don't, I don't know, but it's, it's an interesting question about whether it could be delegated. I think what it is now is that you have to have more than 75% before you can file a suit. You have to have a, a more than a majority of the owners agreeing. And that's better than, than having, you know, be one at, one at a time. But it's still, it's still apparently in the, in the insurance industry view, it's still too risky for them. And I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure why, but it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Ms. Hulteen and then Ms. Nosler Beck online.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Susan, for your presentation. Although your name tag says you're Valerie Nosler Beck.
Oh, good.
Welcome to council.
Thank you.
I am just curious if you could talk a little bit about the deed restriction in terms of how that program actually allows the owners to build some equity without actually capitalizing on the full market gain?
Yep. It's, it's a good question because it is, philosophically, it's the one that people are, are most concerned about. But it depends on the program, of course, but in the Monarch Mills Building, people could have 3% a year increase in value and over the course of, and you would know this, over the course of a 10-year period, that's, that's market. You know, I mean, if you're, you're lucky. I mean, during some of our 10-year periods here, no, no one got 3% a year. In others, it's, in Habitat or in others that are deed restricted, it's, it's a, you take the, you know, you get a market, you get an appraisal and then you get 25% of the increase in some, and that's, and that's all you can get. So it really, it varies and again, it, it is one of the things that people argue against the most, which is, you know, so they've been there, why don't they deserve that? Well, and it's, and it's, you know, it's, in two years from then, if you paid $300,000 for it and it's, and it really goes up to 600,000 because that was a market, then should you get $300,000 of, of equity there? So it just has, it'll, it just depends on the community and how you do it.
So it's, I mean, it's enticing to me because it does allow people to build some equity. I mean, we're, we're dealing with different gradients here of just getting people into housing, getting them into stable housing, but, you know, ultimately the more people we can help build equity.
Yep.
It's, it's using those dollars to their benefit. I'd be kind of curious also, you know, we're, we are a small but mighty city here in Wheat Ridge. And, you know, one of the things we really grapple with is using our dollars locally versus like how do we best, you know, contribute to the regional and county level? And if you could maybe speak a little bit to effective strategies for, for a smaller city like us that may not have a lot of, of our own capital? I know you've identified other strategies that can be used around different assets and different policies, but speaking a little bit to local versus regional and maybe speaking to in lieu of programs that can be better leveraged locally versus regionally?
Yep. Okay. Well, the, I still call them the Jefferson County Housing Authority, Foothills. Foothills does a great job of, of representing the county. And I don't know whether when you were making your comment, you were talking about Wheat Ridge having its own housing authority, if that was what you were saying. But Jefferson, I mean, they, Foothills does a great job, but I don't know how active they have actually been within Wheat Ridge or if you, and I don't know that, are there, do they have units here?
Yep.
And, and to the extent that you're able to work with them and find land and support rezonies or whatever it is for them to be, to be more visible here, I mean, that's probably the best thing you can do because they, I mean, they have, they have the expertise, they have the, they have access to resources that when smaller communities are all competing with, with each other, it, it doesn't end up well for anybody. So it seems like that regional, their, the fact that they're a regional housing authority makes some sense. You know, I would, I, I do think that Elevation or the Urban Land Conservancy who bring money with them, they don't necessarily ask you. I mean, they, they may ask you to match, but I think that they look at each municipality's ability in a different way. And, but I think that developing some of those relationships where, where these groups have, have access to other capital is, is probably the best thing to do. And, and if you, you know, you do have, you know, you do have things going on here. I mean, I won't go, I don't know, I know you just approved the master plan for it, but that's a big campus. And I don't know whether that, whether that's ever going to come back to council again. Well, I assume they have to come back for rezoning or something like that. That's your leverage. I mean, it's not, and it's, and most, there are not a lot of communities that have campuses that large that are going to become something else. So it's, it's, and, and you can either end up with that being a very cool, high-end development that is, it's great. And that would be wonderful if that happened too, but that may not be the only thing you need in your community. So take advantage of that and, and try and get that balance in that may not, they may not say that that will be, that they will, that will bring the highest price to them when they're dealing with a developer, but they're a nonprofit too. Let's not forget that they are, the SCL is a nonprofit. So they, they have, you know, they have some other, other pressures on them. I'll tell you, I'm sure. Yes, you've been dealing with it for a long time. All I did was go there for births. But yeah, I mean, I think that's, you know, it's always that, that rub with, with large institutions that are, that, that are, they're nonprofits in their community. The other, the other group is, I mean, you're, you're very fortunate to have the First, First Foundation.
Colorado First.
Colorado First.
Yeah.
Kelly, Kelly Duncan.
Kelly Duncan.
And she's really interested in affordable housing. I mean, she actually reached out to me before, before this, and maybe this was just a coincidence, we were having lunch or something because I knew her in her past life with the Colorado Health Foundation, but we had a long conversation about what can happen actually on that campus or in general, what role can they play to help? So, you know, find a role for them. I mean, if they wanted, if they want to be an active partner here, they can, they can dedicate funds and, and if you have some land, I mean, it's, it's not as easy as, and you know this, it's what you do for a living, but it's, it's not as easy as just saying, okay, here's some land and, and here's $25,000. But it takes, it takes a lot, a lot of energy from people who are, who have common vision and, and stuff gets done. And it doesn't have to take 19 years, so.
Great, thank you, Susan.
Yep.
Thank you. I have Councilor Nosler Beck online and had a question for us. Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, everybody. And I'm, I'm very grateful that I get to join from remote. I'm just kind of across the street, but thank you for that. I, I wanted to first just recognize, I thought that the- I, I wanted to first just recognize, I thought that the presentation was so helpful. One of the questions that had come up earlier, oh, I'm going to change my view, this is really weird. I can see myself on like, three screens. I'm sorry.
I see four of you. Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. One of the conver, conversations that came up during one of our city council meetings was really being able to define what affordable housing is. And I thought that your presentation did a really incredible job of, you know, putting faces and jobs and families to what these numbers mean and what's affordable. And the gap that you brought up, or the disconnect that happens between both the need for homeless housing and people who are in that situation versus the workforce housing component is a challenge that I think is going to be one of our hurdles to cross when we start talking about trying to implement or make any changes, whether that's to zoning, or, you know, trying to figure out how to work with developers on this. Do you have any good examples of communities that have maybe messaged, messaged those, those two types of issues, you know, areas of concern differently? Both the workforce training and the, and the homeless situation? Do you have any good examples? Because they do just get bucketed together.
Yep, they do. And this is exactly on point for your, with your question. But my favorite marketing program for that missing middle piece was, was years ago, San Rafael County, which is across the bridge from San Francisco, their Chamber of Commerce, wasn't even the city, the Chamber of Commerce ran, bought all of the, the advertising and the size of all the buses there, and had pictures of firefighters and teachers. And, and the line was, we're, we're happy to, to teach your children or to provide fire services. It's too bad we can't live here. And they, and they did it over and over and over again, and it was very effective. And they, every time they went in for a bond issue, it passed. And they, and they kind of got ahead of it. Not that anybody gets ahead of it in, in that county. But I thought that was, I mean, really trying to put a face on who we're talking about here. And of course, back then, the homeless issues weren't what they are today. So let me think about that, about, you know, I, you know, the homeless issue is so, is so out of control right now. And, and I don't know what your, where, where things are with you in your community.
Yeah, and Susan, and, and on that, you know, we, we are doing a lot to try and address that issue as well. And so, you know, this is kind of walk and chew gum. I, I guess I'm, I'm just asking if you have any good examples of communities that have been able to walk and chew gum at the same time on this, on these two buckets in the affordable housing?
I'm not sure that there are any examples around the country right now that are doing that.
Yeah. Okay, so then Wheat Ridge is going to be first?
Yeah, that's why, that's right, you need to be first.
I had one other quick question. With AMI and the, you know, cost of a, of a home, I think, you know, you're showing those, those various numbers. Is that, like, is that, would that be for a, a teacher? Let's just, or I, I would like to use the home healthcare worker example, because that is confounding how low that income is. But if a home healthcare worker is bringing home $29,000 a year, is that for that home healthcare worker's entire family? So is that housing for a family? Or is that housing for just one person?
It, it, that, that particular number is a single person's income. So if you have two people, obviously, if you have two wage earners there, then, I mean, I, and I have a chart that I, that I have to pull out myself, but, because this is Jefferson County numbers of what the income levels are and what the rent levels are for, for different, different sized families, for, you know, two-person families and up. And, and with the size, the number of bedrooms in it. So it, it does vary. But if somebody has an income of $27,000 a year, they're not going to be a homeowner. I mean, and, and even at $54,000 a year, that is tough. I mean, I think that there was one example of that. But, you know, the, even though it's, I mean, I'm very active with elevation, and I hear what our prices are, or Habitat's prices are compared to what they used to be, you know, and it's affordable unit, I mean, hell, we're doing units at $300,000. And we think that's, that's, you know, we're proud of ourselves, but it's still, it's just too much. But it costs that to build, I mean, to build them without any profit in them. So it's, it is, it's a dilemma, but you've got to have to just take a piece of it and try and deal with, with if that, you know, figure out what the most, the highest priority income group is, or work, you know, whatever, whatever group you think is, you have the biggest issue with, and see if you can figure out how to address that with the production of housing. And that's, that's, that's the only thing you can do. Because if you can't solve, I mean, there's no city that's solving all the problems. And it, and it, and the fact that you're talking about addressing homelessness at the same time you're looking at the workforce is, is really healthy. Because it's, you can't, you know, you can't just pick one, but, you know, it's, it's really hard to even figure out to do one. But, but you need to look at that, at both of them. So I applaud you for that. I'll come back in a year and see how it goes.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Susan, can you speak a little bit about density bonus? So, I, I know that at a certain point, bonus density doesn't, it doesn't pencil out anymore, right? So if it's, if you're going from, you know, three stories to four stories, if you have to go from stick frame to steel, if you, you know. So, can you just talk about, like, some ways that you feel like bonus density are successful?
Yeah, and it's, it is, it is important to differentiate those, because three to five, five to eight, eight stories and above, you can really make the efficiencies work when you get, I mean, you get above eight stories, you're getting into high-rise building, and, and building another couple floors onto that, you don't, you're not changing major codes on it. And that's where it's worked the best. It, it, you're right, unless, unless the number of units is that dramatic, and you have a kind of building that is, that is, you can get a lot of units on it to take on the extra cost of going from, from a wood-framed building to a steel, it doesn't matter, even though in this market, it might not be that big of an issue. I mean, it really, the, the costs of lumber and, the cost of lumber is coming back down, because the steel is going back up. But it's not just those building materials, it's a lot of the other fire requirements. So what I think it's mostly effective is when you're already up at that height, and you go higher.
Gotcha. And do you think, let's see if there, we, I mean, we do have an amazing opportunity with Luthern, and, but we do have some other smaller infill developments that happen in our community, where it's, you know, it's an acre lot, and, you know, they're putting 22 units on it. Do you, do you think that a successful strategy with, with bonus, considering bonus density in that kind of situation would be, you know, like, you, we'll, we'll give you 22, but we'll give you 24 if you, if you make two of those, you know, deed restricted, affordable? Do you think that that, that that is enough, is enough of a, of a bonus density, of a, of a bonus there for it to be, to be something they would bite on? Or do you think there'd have to be like, an additional, and plus, we'll give you this money?
Right.
To kind of fill that gap?
I mean, it depends on whether, again, you're changing building types. I mean, or you can.
Sure, I'm thinking like townhouse, I guess.
For townhouses, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's, it's pretty expensive to build townhomes as affordable. I mean, unless you can, you know, get some subsidy in them, but they, the construction costs for, just to build one are pretty, are pretty high, so they're, but they could be less expensive than, than what, what the other ones are. I think if you're talking about a townhome development, you can give, and you give excess, I mean, if, but most, most builders are going to maximize what they're building on that site to begin with. So I'm not sure why they wouldn't be building that extra two. So, I don't, and I, I don't know what the circumstances are.
I guess I'd say like, if, if planning said, you know, you can only have 22 on this lot, but then if we had some, something that said, if somebody's building affordable, then we can give them the extra. Yeah, so they can have a, you know, maybe one of their buildings go from four to five.
Right.
And then one of them goes from three to four, or something, depending on the configuration.
It could, I mean, it could make a difference there. I mean, I, I, it's, you know, it's, it's one of those, it depends. But if, if you're talking about the same kind of building site, and, and, and you're not, you know, you're, you're, this guy's giving me, is looking at me over there in terms of, you know, you still have setbacks, you still have things you have to, you have to live with, but maybe your open space requirement can be a little bit less, and maybe there are ways you can densify it. The one thing you have to be careful about, and it's not so much with townhomes, but when people densify, they start making the unit smaller. And, and that's part of the problem we have in Denver, which is that we have thousands of one-bedroom units. And, and that's not family-oriented. I mean, if your, if your priority here is for families that, they know that, what, you want them to stay in Denver, I mean, in, in Wheat Ridge, and you want them coming to Wheat Ridge, then you, you need to build two and three-bedroom units. And, and not let them say, oh, you, give you a bonus and you build one bedroom unit, because that's, that's really not what you need.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions before we, you've, you've done a lot of talking tonight, so thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Really appreciate it, Mr. Stites.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just one quick question. We have a lot of older apartments and, and townhomes and things like that with, like, older landlords in the city. Is there, are there programs that go in and help some of those established landlords that maybe have apartment complexes, things like that, turn some of their units into affordable housing?
You know, there's something called naturally occurring affordable housing, which, which is probably what those older ones are. So they're, you know, they're, they're there, NOAA, whatever that stands for. And they're, you're saying that they just need to modernize them and not, and not raise the rents? That would be the hope.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. You know, there, I, I can't think of, other than you using, you have community development block rent funds, you, you make choices on how you spend that. City of Denver takes a block of that, and, and they use that for single-family rehab, for people that are senior, that want to stay in their home. You could probably create a program like that for, for people that are there. I mean, the other thing you could do is you could go to the Elevation Community Land Trust on that one, not Elevation, the Urban Land Conservancy, who has bought up a bunch of apartments, not a bunch, but some, and two that I know of in Lakewood and, and others in Denver. And they have found, you know, someone who wanted to retire and paid them market value for it. And then they renovated it, and they kept it as affordable. So they, I mean, though, if you have them, I mean, this is, the housing stock you have here could be a benefit. I mean, that could be, that, that could be something that's, that's an asset for you, not a liability.
Sure.
Well, thank you very, oh, Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just thinking about something which, I don't know, might not have a whole lot to do, but it should. Our interest rates right now are low, okay? The price of property is high. So is there any thought about when the interest rates go high? Then the value goes down on the houses?
Yeah, except in this market, it's not happening that way. I mean, it had, it didn't happen that way, you know, in the last cycle. I mean, there's just so much of a demand in, you know, in the metro area still growing so much, or the state's growing so much, that people are still coming in here, paying above-market prices, which just inflates the value even more. And, and it, and it seemed to be independent of what the interest rates were. Because people that are, people that are buying a lot of these units are paying cash for them. That's, you know, that's, and it's, it's great, but it's not helping the overall economics of what's going on.
Well, I just don't believe the interest rates are going to be staying this low, okay?
No, I agree.
Because I know you spoke of the 80s or whatever, like that. In 1981, interest mortgage rates were 18%, okay? So, if it goes up high, there's no way that people are going to be able to afford, not to be millionaires.
Right.
So.
Well, you know, the, the wonderful thing about Habitat as an organization is that they, they are their own lender. And they don't show, they charge 2% or 1%, I mean, forever, they never charged any interest on it. And you can only do that when you're a nonprofit. You know, that's, that's the private marketplace, and it, and hopefully, we'll never get to that point again. But you're right, I mean, they are, they're creeping up as we speak right now. So it's, it's hard to control that, and that's, that's not where we want to be.
So when it's affordable housing, then, that's a fixed rate for ever?
It depends on people's mortgages. If they're, if they're buying, if they buy an FHA, if they have an FHA mortgage, then it's fixed. And, and if they buy, I mean, it depends, it really depends on lenders and how much they're, how, how long of a fixed rate. People can buy, they can, they can work with the market themselves and make assumptions about it going down, and, and get a variable rate interest on mortgage, but I wouldn't do that in this market. So, but they, but there are plenty of fixed rate mortgages that are just, the rates are going up a bit now.
Uh-huh, okay, thank you.
Mr. Ohm, and then Ms. Hulteen?
I have, I have one last question.
Okay.
Do you ever see any live-work affordable units?
You know, we developed them at Fireclay, and I don't know that, but, but the picture was, but we, along, this is along Blake Street, and we had, all of the first-floor units had, had workspace on it, and then upstairs was the kitchen and bedroom and that kind of thing. And the only ones that we actually sold for that were to a couple of artists whose parents paid for them. So we kept scratching our heads, saying, why isn't this working? And it was just that, at that time, there, people weren't working, working at home as much as they are now. So it, it may be that that's a, a very viable model now, but, but it, it wasn't in the past for us. But, you know, it, it could very well come back that way. Yeah.
Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is for Patrick. It was referenced earlier, so the city was awarded the DOLA grant. Can you just refresh your memory really quickly what that grant is and what the timeline is for that?
Yeah, thank you, I was going to mention that at the end, but, good segue.
Well, this is the end.
So that is the end, then. Yeah, the city was, was fortunate enough to receive its $112,000, and it's from the DOLA, Colorado Department of Local Affairs. And it's for Affordable Housing Strategy Planning Grant. And it's essentially going to create a strategic plan for the city, and an action, and an action plan on affordability, affordable housing in Wheat Ridge. So we're really excited about it. We're, staff's working on a timeline right now. We're working with purchasing, on developing the scope for the, for the, for the RFP, to hire a consultant to help us with that process. So we're hoping, I don't know, when we'll get it out, out to bid, but soon.
I'm just, I'm curious, Councilmember Stites brought up a couple of weeks ago what it would take to reinvigorate our, our own housing authority, understanding that we don't currently have any funding mechanism for them to be talking about how to be using the funding. But it seems to me, if we are undergoing that strategy, it would be prudent for us to reactivate them, to have them as partners discussing that. So in order to get that moving again, what is an action that council needs to take?
Nothing really, I mean, I think we're developing a list of stakeholders who's going to be involved in the process. And I think they'd make sense that they'd be part, they'd be a stakeholder in that process.
Okay, all right. So if we wanted them to actually start meeting again, our housing authority, is what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I mean, they, they meet when needed. I think they have to meet kind of once right now, because they don't have any money or any projects. But if, if we do roll them in as a stakeholder, yeah, we'll just, I mean, Ken and Lauren manage that, that authority, so they can schedule a meeting with them to get them involved.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, thank you very much. Very interesting presentation, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of good work that you're doing, and a lot of good ideas for us to pursue.
Great, thank you.
We thank you, we thank you very much. Thank you so much. Oh, okay. Yes. We can certainly do, do five minutes, why don't we? Why don't we come back at about five or so after?[602.73]
2016 city council decided to table the ordinance due to the need for some more discussion. So since then, there's been a lot of public efforts around ADUs. Not necessarily ADUs specifically, but ADUs have been kind of included in most of the city's public engagement processes since then, including the neighborhood revitalization strategy, citizen surveys, and most recently, the Let's Talk program, which is being run through the community development department as well. And overwhelmingly, there's been really strong support for ADUs within the city. The most recent resident survey showed about two-thirds of residents supporting or strongly supporting ADUs, similar or even higher numbers in some of the Let's Talk programs. And so, just kind of anecdotally, staff gets a lot of inquiries about, from property owners, about whether they can build a new ADU on their property, or whether an existing structure is an ADU, and the answer right now is no, we don't allow ADUs. So there's not really much we can tell them other than to stay engaged. But as the data shows, I mean, there's been multiple, multiple public engagement opportunities since that original city council study session in 2016, all the way through today. So I wanted to get into some of the details now. We don't define accessory dwelling in our code. We do define dwelling unit, which is a building designed for occupancy as complete independent living quarters for one or more people with independent sleeping and kitchen facilities. And that is a little bit different than the ADU definition I mentioned earlier, in that an ADU is clearly subordinate, or kind of smaller than the primary structure. An ADU also can't be sold separately. It's meant to be contained within the same ownership and the same lot. We do have some regulations on accessory buildings, but specifically in the code currently, it does not allow dwelling units to be located within accessory buildings. And so, we have provisions in our code about non-conforming buildings or uses. And we get a decent amount of inquiries about whether a dwelling unit in the city is a legal dwelling unit or not. And they kind of fall into two different categories. So there's the legally non-conforming category, which may have been legal at one time, but is now prohibited. They can predate the city's incorporation, for example, or may have had some sort of recognition over time, but current codes wouldn't allow them to be built in that form. And then we have illegal dwelling units, which were created by an owner or previous owner without any sort of approvals and violation of city code. And so both of those exist, and as staff occasionally were asked to determine whether a dwelling unit, an accessory dwelling unit, or a primary dwelling unit is legally non-conforming, or legal, or illegal. And so, and the staff reported, provided that checklist of how we go through. It's a pretty exhaustive process in order to find all the data needed to make that determination. But like I said, that's fairly rare. We do get some of those inquiries. Those seem to have decreased recently. And now, most of the inquiries around ADUs are, can I build one, and how soon? As an update from the 2016 discussions, I think a lot has changed in the past five years in terms of ADU data, not only in the metro area, but also statewide and nationwide. Wheat Ridge is now definitely an outlier among peer communities and communities in the state and country in terms of, we don't allow ADUs, and most people do in some capacity. Only three other cities in the metro area that were surveyed don't allow ADUs, and two of those are actually pursuing code amendments in 2022. So definitely in the minority there. And since 2016, a lot of the original provisions around ADUs have been changed to be more permissive as well in other communities, and some communities that previously didn't allow them now allow ADUs. Statewide, same trends. People are really recognizing that ADUs fulfill some need in their communities. And I'm not going to go through this whole list, because it's almost a page long of pretty small text, but there are some regional trends in terms of where ADUs are allowed, lot sizes, types of ADUs, the types of review. And there's definitely a regional trend in the metro area of allowing, but allowing with some sort of building size restrictions of that nature. And then nationally, Colorado, to be frank, is a little bit behind the national trends in terms of permissiveness towards ADUs, and also potentially best practices as well. Some states actually have legislation that preempts local law to require communities to allow ADUs, and I think that's now up to seven or eight states. Colorado does not have that law, but again, most communities do allow accessory dwelling units. And then, there are some kind of best practices around ADU legislation that have developed over the past five years. I think initially, and it definitely came up in the 2016 ordinance discussions, there were a lot of fears around ADUs, and it was kind of an unfamiliar. But communities have had the chance to figure this out already, and have had multiple years of permitting data and community feedback. And so, you know, if we decided as a city to pursue an ordinance, we would be building off of those years of institutional knowledge in other locations. But both the American Planning Association and the AARP are advocates for ADUs, and believe that they do play some role in serving housing needs and different housing types, and family types as well. So at this point, staff is recommending that you look into a code amendment next year, but we do need to seek some policy direction. And the reason why we're recommending the approach that I've outlined in the staff report is ADUs should be permitted in some capacity, but we don't need to simply just focus on those legally non-conforming or illegal ADUs that we know exist. For a couple of reasons. I think there's been a pattern of support in the community over the past six years or so for ADUs. It's now the norm for communities to allow new ADUs, and only addressing just a small portion of non-conforming or illegal dwelling units picks winners and losers in that. It only focuses on those that already have the opportunity on their property. They either purchased or built or converted a structure. And so it's a really, really small percentage of the overall number. So with that, I think our intent is to perhaps recommend a follow-up study session to look over ordinance framework, and then establish some sort of ADU policy. But really, this is at your behest and your direction. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions. I know there was a lot in the memo, so let's get into it.
Let's start with Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Scott, for all the work on this. Kind of the way I see this process happening, and it was kind of mentioned in the memo too, is the way our STR process went, where I'm hoping you walk out of here tonight with some good direction to bring us some draft ordinance, and then, again, we look at that. That also gives our community another opportunity to come to another study session, to talk about how they feel about that draft ordinance, and then we're able to give you some more specific direction. So I actually have a seriously long list of direction that I would like to see move forward tonight, but before that, I get into that, I'll let everybody ask their questions. And one of mine is, what do we have for current lot coverage requirements? And would we change, would we need to look at changing that, or would it just, would it stay the same, and ADUs would have to fall within the current lot coverage requirements?
There's a pretty wide range of lot coverage allowances across the city. R1 kind of being the lowest density at, I believe, 25%. And then, R3 closer to 40%. Some of the mixed-use districts are close to 80. So there is a really wide range. But I think for some of those districts with a really small overall percentage, especially some of those smaller lots, I guess we'd be looking at you for direction of whether that could be increased potentially or not. I mean, we already do allow accessory buildings on those properties, but those count towards that overall total. And so there are potentially some of the districts that have small percentages allowances, where someone just couldn't add another building or addition to their property.
And then, do we, so if as a municipality, we allow ADUs, would areas, like it was mentioned, that there were some, some areas that were more suburban of nature that are more managed by HOAs? So if we allowed those as a municipality, would the HOA still have the right to, say, to restrict them?
I think it depends on the HOA. I mean, the city, we, like, city staff doesn't look at HOA covenants. If someone was going to come in with an application, it's kind of presumed that it would have been approved by the HOA. So we couldn't prohibit an HOA from making a decision necessarily, I don't believe, unless you think otherwise, Ken. But any of our straight zone districts, which include neighborhoods with HOAs, I mean, they would be permitted by city code, and then it would be up to the HOA to administer any sort of other restrictions that would be placed upon that property.
I think Scott's right. I think an HOA could likely be more restrictive, and that, you know, the city would have no say over that. The fact that we are more permissive in the zoning code doesn't mean that the HOA can't be, or couldn't be more restrictive and say, our covenants say, no accessory units.
So as long as they were not less restrictive than what the municipal code is, then it would not have to fall online?
Right.
And then, I do like the way that you are approaching this holistically, with both the ADUs that are legally non-conforming and illegal, non-conforming, it's a lot. And it is a good point, right? If someone built something on their property, and then they would get the opportunity to get it into a legal status, but then other people wouldn't have the opportunity. So basically, breaking the rules would be a payoff there. So I do appreciate having this together and holistically. I just wanted to ask, though, about the, when we're looking at the current legal non-conforming and illegal ADUs that we have in our community, I saw that the approach would be that it would be a, it would be a per, like, you would look at, have to look at each place individually to try to kind of apply, knowing that if they, let's say, if something, you know, if the square footage of one that's currently in our community is larger than the one that will end up in our code, what is really the process? Would it be that it, like, what would it now become? It's a legal non-conforming, and then we have the code. What would it become?
I think a good ordinance would allow some of those units that may not otherwise comply with current codes to still be legitimized in some capacity. And actually, that was one of the recommendations of the APA and AARP, was that we know that a lot of the pre-existing dwelling units may not meet all of the requirements, but there could be opportunities. And maybe there might be some upgrades that have to be made. We haven't even touched on the subject of building code and utilities. I mean, there's a lot to what goes into this, but having some sort of pathway to at least legitimize those units, and even though they may not meet current standards, they can still be considered legal accessory dwelling units.
And how do you envision that pathway? Would it be something like, you have to, you have to address six of the 10 standards? Like, you have to meet six of the 10 standards? And if you, if you don't, knowing that maybe size is not something, you know, making it something smaller wouldn't necessarily be viable, but then there's some other standard they would have to address? Would it be like, you'd have to address a certain amount of the standards? Or would it just be, we're looking at it, it's, there's no life and health, safety issues at it, it's been in operation like this for a certain, per X time, and we're just going to say, okay, you're good?
I think there can be a pretty wide range of that. I see Ken pulling the mic, so go for it.
Sure. There's such a disparate spread of fact patterns. And it's, I mean, I think we've historically tried to be, you know, as reasonable as possible in terms of looking at those fact patterns, right? Whether it be, you know, in some fashion that the city, maybe we approved a separate electrical service, right? So that, so we had a role in creating that unit in some form or fashion. Sometimes it's purely time, right? That there's no, you know, it looks like the work has been there for 30 years, and, you know, we evaluate that. I'll give you, I'll give you two examples, because this, you know, comes up periodically for sure. One would be a unit just around the corner, on 32nd Avenue. Was a two-unit building, looked like by original construction, but had a converted unit in the basement that, you know, looked like it'd been there a good 20 years. This came up probably 10 years ago. It, you know, generally had a separate entrance, had bedrooms, had living space, had a kitchen, had a separate electrical service. Couple things it didn't have, right? It didn't have adequate egress windows in the bedrooms, and it didn't have a separate gas shut-off. And there were a few other kind of electrical issues that were definitely safety issues from a code perspective. We worked with that property owner to get adequate egress windows, to make sure that they both had separate gas and electric services for shut-off purposes, and, you know, made those official units. So that was the compromise that we reached, based on the facts that were on the table for that unit. Another example where we didn't come to that conclusion was a unit that looked like it'd probably been fairly recently converted, didn't have adequate clear height in the living spaces, didn't have any separate utilities, right? It was all kind of jerry-rigged sanitary sewer, water, all just kind of pulled over from the main house, and there was no, you know, separate shut-offs for water, sewer, gas, or electric. And we told them, this isn't a legal unit, you need to convert it back. So there's just a, there's a whole spectrum of those different fact patterns.
So I guess what I'm asking is, would the suggestion be, when we're looking forward to moving down the road and actually writing this, would the suggestion be to be, to be less specific in this, in these particular situations? So that there is the room for judgment, and the room for saying, like, that looks like it was 30 years old, but we, but you actually need egress windows, because that's a life and health, safety issue? Like, is it, would it be best to be the least specific about that?
I would say in the ordinances that I researched, they're not specific, and I think that allows more flexibility.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Hulteen.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think just a point of clarity, when council had our retreat 150 years ago, it feels like, the reason we had separated out wanting to first look at existing structures that were non-compliant was that we have an existing problem. I mean, we have a lot of property owners with existing problems, that they have these, a lot of times they purchase the properties, you know, they came with them. So it, to me, it kind of felt like what we were talking about is, we need to solve, like, a real problem in the community. And I'm just saying this to clarify, it wasn't to then not, I mean, the intent was then to follow that process with what is regulating new ADUs. So a lot of sort of my concerns and questions are similar to Ms. Hoppe's, in that I'm looking forward to figuring out how to make both work well in our community. And, I mean, I have several constituents. I know, I know a lot of us have heard from specific constituents with specific issues. So as we move forward with this, you know, I appreciate Ken giving examples of different ways that the cities kind of use some flexibility. So to me, if we're going to move forward with them together, is, it's really important to me that we are giving as much allowance and leniency to bring our existing structures so that we're supporting people who are already living in our community, to, you know, be able to maximize and realize their property. So if there's ways we can segregate out with, like, grandfather-in-class, or, you know, some sort of, like, you know, you've got 24 months to work with us to bring it into compliance or whatever, like, I just want to make sure we're being really flexible, as flexible as we can there to work with our existing neighbors. And I just also want to remind everyone, this is a lot like the short-term rental process in which we're talking about a regulatory environment with people who have these non-conforming and illegal structures. And as we heard from the McMillan's tonight, when, you know, that comes to light, like, they actually at risk of being kicked out of their homes, or not being able to use it. So we're, we're working on a policy in which people who are impacted by it are nervous about coming forward. I had a couple of people reach out to me that didn't want to give comment, because they were worried that they would get outed. So I just always want us to be mindful when we're doing a process that inherently doesn't allow everyone to come forward comfortably with that. And I think with that, I'm not going to get into too many specifics. I just kind of wanted to share my high-level objectives around addressing our existing structures, because, you know, one of the things we heard both in the live comments as well as online, a lot of these are historic structures in our community, and because they're not able to be legally recognized, people aren't able to do the investments to keep them up. And I would hate for us to lose that. And one of the concerns I have in, like, our two neighborhoods with the minimum lot square footage, like, a lot of them are probably going to exceed that if they're historic in nature. So those are just the places I want to make sure we've got the flexibility, that we can, you know, keep that condition as intact for our existing homeowners, while looking forward to figuring out ways to invite new ADUs into our city. Thank you.
Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I would just like to thank staff for this thorough presentation, and I really appreciated the research checklist, because it gave me kind of an idea of the criteria and the questions that you would ask when we're discussing the non-conforming, whether they're legal or illegal dwelling units. And I have to say, so this was one of the very first items that I asked to be put on an agenda in 2017. So I am ecstatic that we are actually talking about this. And at first, you know, I was very hesitant to be addressing the existing non-conforming legal and illegal ADUs, while simultaneously trying to create a policy around regulating ADUs. And like council member Hulteen kind of expressed, my reasoning was along the same lines, is, you know, we didn't want a punitive kind of policy in place. We wanted a situation in an environment in which we wanted to have people be comfortable in coming forward and admitting that they have these properties, and maybe they bought it this way, or whatever the situation is, is that we wanted them to be able to be brought into the light and, and updated as necessary. And so, I think, like council member Hulteen said, we have to be very mindful of that. And I don't, I don't know that we'll be able to have the same flexibility with the existing non-conforming ADUs, while simultaneously trying to bring regulations to future ADUs. So I guess, I guess, could you provide a little bit more clarity on how, would it just be a case-by-case basis? Do we have enough staff to handle that kind of a situation?
Can I start, Ken? Because I think, I mean, this is a problem that's not unique to Wheat Ridge. Like, there are many, many communities that have had the same exact issue come up, where there's existing non-conforming structures, existing illegal structures, and there are model ordinances out there that have allowed the flexibility to people that have existing buildings on their property to retain them, and even remodel them and fix them up. And so I think there, most communities go with one ordinance, and they figure it all out at one time. And I think following a model that's been proven, and has been really frankly figured out by now, is probably an appropriate thing while still allowing the flexibility that's desired by the community and constituents.
So, but would it, would it be addressed on a case-by-case basis? As far as, like, bringing those, like, would you use this checklist and kind of?
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, we think that the checklist kind of approach, maybe it's not perfect, it, you know, likely needs some refinement. We haven't dusted it off recently, but, you know, I think that's been, we felt that's been a reasonable approach. Again, we'll certainly look at fine-tuning that as part of this process at council's, you know, clear direction. But I think, you know, I would encourage council to, you know, be thoughtful in thinking about, you know, some sort of a, well, you've got 24 months to bring it into compliance, right? Because there's clearly some things out there that just are either, A, substandard housing, and shouldn't be, right? I mean, that's the chicken shack model, right, that was converted? And those aren't necessarily a good housing option, right? And, you know, there's others that have a real good reason why they should be allowed to continue, and there's everything in between, right? There's some, one of your neighbors who converted a basement and did a separate unit two months ago, right? I mean, that's out there too. And, I mean, that's the reality, right? And I don't want to, I would be remiss in not saying that I don't want to be put in a position where we have to memorialize that illegal word, that they called Scott up, and Scott said, "Well, we're talking about it, we're talking about it, your council wants to talk about it, but, but we don't allow ADUs." And they said, "Okay, well, I'm going to build one." So that's kind of some of the reasons why we think we need some discretion in that
Thank you, Ms. Nosler Beck, online.
Val, you're muted.
I know, I can't figure out how to unmute.
You're live now.
You unmuted and then got muted again. There you are.
Okay. I am really sorry about that. This is, just to expand a little bit more on what both council member Hulteen and council member Dozeman were discussing, when we had the study session, not the study session, the retreat, long ago, one of the issues that I think staff had brought up was going to be a challenge with the non, like, figuring out our non-conforming buildings, was that, you know, the staff time that that'll take. And I appreciated councilwoman Dozeman bringing up if we have the actual, the staff resources to support the community. I think what we're kind of landing on here is, you know, where property owners will have to opt in to get into regulation. We're going to probably end up asking them to come forward on this. And so, with that, my question is, to what council member Dozeman was saying, do we have the staffing to support that? And I think that that requires us to also do some real work on outreach to let our property owners know that this is something that'll be coming down the pipe.
Hi. I mean, I think it depends a lot on the approach, right? I mean, from a staffing perspective, we're, you know, we work on this issue as we speak, right? I mean, these issues come up, and we evaluate them on a case-by-case basis. You know, Scott's memo gave you some scenarios where it's typically a transactional thing, right? So a real estate transaction is pending, or about to be pending, and someone calls up one of the party's new owner, old owner, real estate agent appraisal, and that's typically the context under which we look at these. I mean, if it were, and we feel very well situated to be able to handle that. If, you know, there's a couple of different other scenarios that might play out, right? I mean, if there were direction to say, you know, "Hear ye, hear ye, come one, come all, if you think you have an illegal unit, come in and, you know, we're here to help," sort of thing. I don't know what that looks like, right? I mean, that's obviously probably going to be more of a staff impact than the former scenario, or the existing scenario. So I think it, or if there's some sort of a, you know, grace period, where, you know, in the next 12 months, you can come in, and if there's reasonable evidence that you had a second unit on your property that may or may not be legal, we're going to figure that out for you. Again, that, that's a different fact scenario. So I think, you know, whether, it depends on how actively, and under what timeframes, if any, that council would wish to, you know, ask us to kind of get the word out on handling existing units. Because we're handling them right now in a variety of ways. So it would just be if you want us to change that status quo, which you can, to, you know, create a different paradigm.
I guess what I'm trying to get at here is, you know, we had some people speak at public comment today about how, you know, they didn't know they weren't in compliance, and found out through, you know, pulling building permits and things like that. I would say that would say that, you know, if there's an option, as the council thinks through how we do this, for us to, you know, do some work on the front end to provide some, you know, like a year-long amnesty or something to come forward and get into compliance on a checklist. But then also, for those property owners that may just not have been looped in, that there also could be some, some steps to move forward if a property is brought up after that specific time or something. And I realize we're really getting into the sausage-making of it all, but I want to make sure that if we're going back to do this, that we're really being intentional about making this really, really helpful to the property owners right now that are in Wheat Ridge and that are either looking to, you know, stay here and make improvements to their homes or to potentially sell their homes. So that's where my head's at. And Ken, thanks for explaining some of those options.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver.
Thanks so much for all the comments that have been said so far. I agree with everything that's been said. My concern is that it's not a punitive model and it's more of a optimistic model because having, you know, had similar experiences to some of the comments that were made earlier, it's really a difficult position to ask people to come forward, knowing that you not only, you might be outed, as you said, but you also might be punished. And so as I'm listening to all these comments, I'm thinking about sort of the 100-year-old farm that I live in and what it would take for me to want to come in and talk about all these things. And so I think as we're considering this, I'd really like to make sure that we do come up with some specifics because it's really not, and I understand that this has to happen, you know, in terms of permitting and all of these different things, but figuring out a situation where people can come in and win, or they know that they're not going to, by having a, "Hey, this is the specific list of things that we're going to ask that you have," so that, so that one doesn't feel like, "Hey, if I come in and ask the question, and I know that the city's been looking at me on aerial photography and things like that, that I'm not going on a watch list." And this has been, you know, sort of a perception in the past, I think, that, you know, whether it's been code enforcement or whatever, but that there's this sort of watch list of bad behavior, if you will. And so, and I'm not saying that there is any one person or something that is at fault for that. I'm saying it's a perception that I think has happened over time through different things and policies. So really, and thank you, Scott, for sort of bringing all of this up and the research you've done. I just feel like it needs to really, I mean, I know that we're tiptoeing through this, and I do think we are going to have to get to sausage-making and really, and specifics on, well, what is non-conforming and what are we okay with? And so that people can make decisions, to the point of the folks that came in and spoke earlier, because I know that there's a lot of people who would like to make those decisions, or know that no is the answer. So my thought is that all of these things are important, but really creating a positive way rather than a, because what I'm hearing right now, I was sort of like, okay, would I feel comfortable walking in and, you know, talking about this stuff? And then I thought, well, no, I'd really like to see a list of, if I'd like to do this, you know, if I'm thinking about doing this, or if I know that I'm never going to be able to do it, I just kind of want to know the answer. So, thanks for...
Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I hear what you guys are saying about that. I think part of the point of being flexible is giving people the opportunity to, is giving people the opportunity to come into conformity, right? And so if we have a list of 25 things, and if we say, you know, what is, Arvada says the size restriction is 40%, can be up to 1,200 square feet depending on lot size. So if we have this whole list of this is where your ADU has to be, then what happens is if we're not flexible to be able to bring those people into legalities, is that then they're just illegally going and bumping down the road still. So I guess, I would say that I think it's important that we still have a little bit of flexibility in that. What we don't really see much in this memo, which I'm assuming when you guys come back to study session, should you get the direction that I'm hoping we'll get today, is that you'll have maybe a little bit more of an outlined process of this is, this is what we're looking for specifically on already existing. This is what we, if someone wants to build something new. These are the X, Y, Zs, 1, 2, 3s of what you have to do.
I think that's the intent. This was really meant to be an overview, and then tonight we were kind of hoping to get some direction, and whether that's to follow regional best practices, or if you have something more specific in mind. I guess I would want to maybe address some of the comments that have been floating around about maybe the culture of fear that has been happening. So I don't know, I don't want to speak too much on this, but I would say, like, having accessory dwelling units be legal is a very different framework than having something, our current status quo, which is they're not legal. And so someone would be, I think, more likely to come forward to the city to pull a permit or say, "Hey, this is an ADU." If they're allowed, then their status quo of them not being allowed, and then kind of potentially contacting a staff person to see, like, is, do the research checklist. But if it's allowed, then they're more likely to kind of come forward and be legitimate and above board in terms of renovations and things of that nature.
Mr. Ohm?
Thank you. I appreciate staff coming with this, coming up with these documents and the criteria, and also thank you to city council members that have tried to bring this up. So my question's looking at this is, my first, and thank you, Mr. Johnstone, for actually, for answering my question about the egress windows. My biggest concern is going to be life safety, that we can't compromise on the life safety. I don't foresee that the city's going to be patrolling and looking at, you know, who has an ADU or not. But once the city's aware of it, you know, and that's maybe a question for the attorney, I don't think the city can just ignore that issue if it's a life safety, you know, or maybe they don't even know what it is, that they have to investigate and see is there a life safety issue. And I think that's something that we can't compromise as a city on. But as far as, you know, the size of, you know, maybe of a basement, I think that just depends on that size. There has to be a little bit of flexibility. If someone has already made something, and perhaps you'd have to look at the, so I think a little bit of flexibility on that. I do think that having these ADUs might eliminate some past problems that we had. I won't get into specifics, but just to say that I think there was an opportunity in the past where perhaps someone could have done an ADU had it been permitted, but because they couldn't, the only alternative was to do a flag lot. And so I think there are some benefits of having the ADUs. And I think, the other question I have is about the parking, and that's kind of my last question. I know we can't regulate the number of on-street parking, but I know the intent of the code is to not have any, one individual monopolize the public right of way. And so I guess, you know, just a careful look at the, how many off-street parking can we reasonably have? And then my last question is the timeframe in, once there's a, I guess, a finding by the, maybe the building official, that there's a life safety issue and things have to be brought up the code, I don't know, I think I may have heard a year. But in this market of construction, I think a year might be unreasonable. It's really tough to get contractors. And so I would just ask staff really take a look what would be reasonable to get contractors, and I'm not sure a year would be sufficient. But on that same side, if it is a life safety issue, then that ADU could not function of having people in it if it's a life safety issue. So however long that takes, perhaps it's one to two years, that person would not be able to use that ADU as a sleeping quarters, I guess. Thank you.
Ms. Holtein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we have a long list of specific provisions that have been brought forth, and I just want to check with council, do we feel like we've given enough direction to staff on the leniency and sort of parameters of our existing structures? And are we ready to transition into talking about others? Okay. So do you, I just want to kind of get a sense, do you want to just go through, like, the list and hit on those? Does that sound okay to staff? All right. Roll up your sleeves, people. Where are they allowed, is the first question.
So I think, are you asking, are they allowed in general? That's the, ADUs permitted. So I guess the question would be, are we, should we perhaps ask for consensus to proceed with the code change to allow ADUs in Wheat Ridge, including provisions for new ADUs, as well as provisions to conditionally allow non-conforming or illegal dwelling units to achieve legalization? And once we start there, then maybe we can go through...
Okay. So question number three, do we have consensus to move on that? We do. Okay.
Okay. So the first issue brought forward is where will, given staff direction on where to allow ADUs?
I think that, I personally feel that we should do in all residential zones, including our mixed use. And also, I was thinking, is, mixed-use commercial doesn't really have any residential in it, right? Mixed-use neighborhood does, though. So I feel like we should include mixed-use neighborhood, as long as if the primary use is also residential. So that was kind of something that I had heard in there. But that's, so that's my opinion on residential zones.
Mr. Stites?
I guess my only issue would be R1 zone. What could we do there? Or is that, would that be allowed there?
You mean not allow them in R1?
Or not allowing an R1 zoning? What, I guess, I guess my question...
See, I feel like they should be allowed in R1, so I wouldn't support not allowing them in R1.
My thought is, is the people who are going to give the most pushback on this are going to be people that live in an R1 zone that like their density to the way it is. I know in like R2, you can start having duplexes and things like that, where all of a sudden, I feel like maybe an ADU kind of feels a little bit more like a duplex. So I don't know that I would, I would prefer that they weren't allowed in R1.
I guess I would have to point out the surveys, both surveys, 2018, 2021, the Let's Talk, all four of the Let's Talk reports and say, and actually, it's in here somewhere, and just point out that the R1 folks are supportive. And here it is. So like on page three, East Wheat Ridge, it ranked two out of nine items. Bel Air, two out of eight. Lepa Manor, there only 13% were opposed or strongly opposed. And these are just from the Let's Talks. These aren't even from the scientific surveys. So I guess I would say R1 is somewhere where people do want them.
Would R1 have the minimum lot coverage to allow for an ADU? Or would that just look different as far as like size goes, like a percentage, right?
So R1 lots, and by the way, there's multiple R1. There's R1, just R1, which is typically west Wheat Ridge, and then there's R1A, R1B, R1C. R1C is almost all east Wheat Ridge. So if we did get direction to allow in certain districts, we would probably need more specificity. But specific to R1, like the large lot, these are very large lots. They have to be a third of acre or larger. So I guess the building coverage could potentially be an issue at 25%. But at the same time, those lots are also the largest and could potentially absorb additional accessory buildings for a lot of the smaller lots, and be less impactful because they're, it's such a large lot that you're not going to be, feel crowded on there. So I think there's the possibility...
And ADUs don't necessarily mean an additional building.
Correct.
It could be above your garage, it could be in the basement, it could be, yeah. So that's why it's like the lot, the maximum lot coverage kind of protects those smaller, like, R1C lots from being just all building, because they would probably have to go above their garage or in their basement.
Okay. I've got the Councilor Hutchinson, Councilor Weaver, and then Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I think whatever is decided needs to be citywide, because I did see on Let's Talk, Applewood area did not want ADUs. So that's not okay, you know, just, you know, the east side of Wheat Ridge start getting, doing the ADUs, but over west, they don't want them. If we're going to do this, it needs to be citywide.
And then Councilor Weaver? I can come back there. And Councilor Ohm?
I think the things to tie into the R1 or any of the other areas is, number one, yes, are we, is it going to be allowed an accessory ADU, which it sounds like probably won't. And then I might have some concern if we strictly prohibit not in, say, like an R1C, would that person then become an applicant requesting the zone change to MUN?
Councilor Dozeman?
Thank you. That was right along the same process that I was having. It would be, it would be a private property owner's, you know, decision on whether they would be able to have or would pursue having an ADU. But I do agree that it should be citywide. And I think that because this has been such a common theme amongst the last six years on our resident surveys, and a concern, especially within the affordability, I think that it should be allowed in all residential zones. And then, you know, it's going to have to be taken on a case-by-case basis as far as like lot coverage at that rate.
Councilor Weaver, we're back at you. If you have, okay, we'll get to scratch you out and go to Ms. Hoppy, and then Ms. Holtein.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I would also just like to mention that R1C is very highly concentrated in my district, and so I absolutely would want to make sure that they're allowed to be a part of this process. If we restricted R1Cs, then that'd be the majority of my district. I have a lot of people in my district, actually, I feel like a couple of the comments even that were online were from District 1. And so I have a lot of people in my district that talk to me often about when are we going to get to where ADUs are allowed. So I would not want to cut them out.
Councilor Holtein?
Thank you. I also support a citywide approach to this in two compelling reasons. One is, just a reminder, it would impact our existing ADUs. So if we don't allow them in R1, then we're taking those off the plate unless we decide there's some flexibility. But more than that, I'm just, I'm compelled by the fact that what we're hearing from people is that the reason we're pursuing these is that it is allowing them for multifamily, intergenerational living situations. It's a part of, you know, our values as a city is allowing people to stay on their properties for long periods of time. And the story I hear again and again and again is that this is about allowing aging parents to cohabitate without actually having to share a structure. And then I have two of my constituents who reached out to me in the last couple of months who have older children with special needs who can't live completely independently. And if they can't make this happen here, they're going to have to move outside of Wheat Ridge so that they can continue to age with their kids. So I'm in support of that. And if no one else has... And if no one else has any comment, I'd like to ask for a consensus that we support this citywide.
Okay.
In all residential zoning, including mixed use neighborhood, or?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Val is reminding us to look at her.
Sorry, Val.
Okay, so the next question in front of us is if we would be allowing detached ADUs? And then, it says detached is one question, then it says attached or basement. So I'm going to go ahead and conjoin, like make that one conversation topic.
I just asked for consensus to allow detached ADUs, attached and basement ADUs.
Okay, consensus there?
All right, the next question in front of us is about administrative review for permitting them? Any discussion? All right, I'd like to ask for a consensus that we allow administrative review for ADUs.
Okay, we have consensus on that.
Okay, the next question in front of us is requiring notice to neighbors. I'd like to ask for a consensus that we do not require notice to neighbors. Do not. So the, all right, so it looks like there's some need for a discussion on that?
Can I ask, do we require that if I'm to build, if I'm going to build a garage, do we require that I notice my neighbors that I'm building a garage?
No, we don't require notice for any development on a single lot, private property.
If I'm adding an addition, like a master bathroom or a master bedroom, am I required to notice my neighbors for that addition that I am building?
No, and regardless of size, you don't have to notice.
Thank you.
Do I have to give notice to my neighbors if I rent out one of my rooms?
Unless it's a short-term rental, and then yes.
Okay, is there, is there any discussion on this from anyone?
Is this discussion?
Discussion.
Okay, Ms. Hutchinson and then Mr. Stites.
Thank you. Notice to neighbors, to me, is something that involves privacy also. So it's up in the air about how big these ADUs can be. And it looks like some of them can be like a regular, another house. So what's the setbacks and how tall are they going to be? And I think we need to figure out, you know, depending, it sounds like they can be any size, almost, depending on lot size. So it could be another single-family house there. I think of an ADU, you know, they, they build those little houses, you know, some of them are even on wheels, you know? So there's got to be, you know, some type of consideration for neighbors. I know ADUs, the thing is, you think you're going to have your family, your parents there. I don't think that's really all that's going to happen. So I think consideration of neighbors is very important. So not everybody lives on like an acre. So.
Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Ms. Hutchinson. You, Scott, you did say that we do require, if it was going to be a short-term rental, that we give notice. And this is, especially in like an R1 neighborhood, this is changing the character of that neighborhood considerably. You're building another structure there that's going to bring in more people into that neighborhood. There should be some notice given to the neighbors.
Ms. Dozeman?
I was going to say that because it was, it was said that we have to give notice for STRs, I was reminded of that. And so that is what I believe would change the character of the neighborhood, not necessarily having an accessory dwelling unit. So I would change my consensus on that matter.
Can I clarify my comment on STRs? That's actually up to the owner to voluntarily notify. That's actually where council landed in the ordinance. It's not the city notifying. So that is a little bit of a difference, but there is a neighbor notice involved with starting the operation of an STR.
Let me remind you, we had a discussion about this, I think at council, whether are we, if we, if we have a notice to neighbors, is in there an oper, is it, does it setting up a dynamic that that means something? You know, and if we've got an administrative process and not a public hearing, that you're not, it sort of sets you up to think, well, oh, I can, I got this notice, but what am I going to do with it? Okay, I've got, Dozeman spoke, I've got Hoppe next, and then Weaver.
I believe Ms. Hulteen's going to re-ask for the consensus.
Oh, I was actually going to make a point. So if anyone else has something else to add?
Well, Ms. Weaver?
Just to follow up on, on the mayor's point, I, and on what Mr. Stites said, I'm, it's not that I'm, I'm, I'm for the noticing, because if, if noticing does absolutely nothing and people have no way to share an opinion about that, then, then the noticing seems, doesn't make any sense to me. So it's not that I am not supportive of not noticing. However, I am, you know, this, this is changing the nature of density in our neighborhoods. And, and it, there's just something that, we've had a lot of conversations around this in Wheat Ridge. And while this is putting it in the owner's hands, which I, I think that's a good move, there's, there's a question in me that, that is, I, I do think it should be citywide. And at the same time, I go back to all of these neighborhood discussions we've had on the right thing in the right place. And I'm, I'm, there is something that, that I can't quite verbalize about not noticing and, and changing this regulation to allow ADUs in all zones, districts. Thanks.
Mr. Ohm?
I have one question for Mr. Cutler. So on R2, if that owner decided to scrape their house and build a duplex, would they have to provide, because they'd be increasing their density, would they have to provide notice to the neighbors?
No, they wouldn't.
Thank you.
Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, so I, I really don't feel good about notice on things where people can't take action on it. And I just think about if we are putting in a notice requirement, let's just say, I decide I'm going to build one in my backyard because my aging father needs to live with me. And then all of a sudden, my, my right to do that becomes a discussion with my neighbors who decide they're not comfortable with it. And, and then that pits me against my neighbors. And I think that is not a position, I try and avoid putting our neighbors in those positions as often as possible because that is contradictory to the quality of neighborhoods that we care about as good neighbor. So I think, I, I will say, I would support stricter restrictions on what people can build and to not require them to have to work with their neighbors to build it. If we're going to allow it, it should be a use by right. And we shouldn't be putting our neighbors in positions where they have to get, you know, permission or enthusiasm from their neighbors about what they need to do to, you know, take care of their own families. And to me, that's what this ADU policy is doing. So I definitely strongly support not doing neighbor, neighbor notice.
Mr. Stites?
You might have convinced me on that one. Let me ask one question real quick. Since Mr. Ohm brought it up earlier, the flag lot, because this is, it's not the same, but it's similar. That administrative process, is there a public notice at all for that?
There is not for flag lots if it's an administrative subdivision, which means three lots or fewer are involved.
Okay. I'm just thinking about the controversy that that stirred up the last time that happened. And this may end up being a similar type of thing.
Ms. Weaver?
I'm just wondering, per Mr. Ohm's comment, what's the difference then between R2, which is what would be allowed in a duplex, and what we're talking about?
That's a very good question and could go on about that for a while. But a duplex is, is a different ownership model than an accessory dwelling unit in a primary structure. Duplex has, they're both complete, separate dwelling units that can be sold separately. They have separate utilities. They have firewalls between, I mean, they're two owners, two addresses, and, and sometimes even a split lot where the builder can sell off either side to separate property owners. An ADU is on one lot that's owned by one person and often will have the same utility connections. And it can never be sold separately. And it's always going to be smaller than the primary structure. So an ADU is probably less impactful than a duplex?
Why is it always smaller? I'm just curious. Because I, I put a much larger addition onto an 800 square foot house. And it's not an ADU, but I'm just saying, i- is that a rule that an ADU is always smaller than the primary dwelling?
That's common practice in accessory. The word implies that it is smaller and, and most codes require that the ADU is significantly smaller, or at least kind of up to the size of the primary structure, but no larger.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and ask for a consensus that we do not require neighbor notice. And Val has, yep, she's.
Okay, we have consensus there.
Okay, and I, so the next thing on the chart here says all residential zones. We actually already addressed that and misinterpreted ADUs permitted. So then the next topic of discussion is minimum lot size.
I'd like to ask for a consensus that we don't require a minimum lot size because we have our, we already have our lot coverage that is going to cover us with that.
Okay, we have consensus there.
Thank you. The next consensus item is requiring any off-street parking. I'd like to, does anyone have any discussion on this?
Ms. Hoppe?
I, I do see in the memo that the, the national, kind of like the, the way that the national way is going and, and the suggestion from the AARP was parking requirements and to, and that they can be burdensome for, for like ADUs. However, I do feel that from a lot of the different conversations that I've had with people in our community on a lot of different things, parking is important and STR is really important. So even though it's, it's kind of going against the, kind of the, the national nationwide suggestions, I, I think that we should allow one off, that we should require one off-street parking.
Listen, Ms. Dozeman?
Yeah, so I, I would agree with that point. But I, I think about the property that I live at and how it's, there's one driveway, but it can fit one car in it. And all of the other occupants of the household are parking on the street. And I think a lot of our residential areas in District Four are like that unless it's bigger lots with multiple driveways. So, and I mean, a lot of the houses on Pierce, same thing. They have one driveway, one car, can't fit any other additional cars in off-street parking. So I think that that might become a bit of an issue of bringing like non-conforming structures into conformance.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I feel like I, I have flexibility on the parking thing. I just felt like, you know, this, what we're doing tonight is, is giving, you know, direction just to get to where we get to another one. And so I, I thought that, well, if we put it in there tonight, and then if we hear a lot from people that, that, that will restrict them from being able to have an ADU and it's important to them, then, you know, we could take it out at another time, too. It's kind of how I feel about that.
Before I go to question, I had a question. What, how do we regulate parking in residential areas now?
Our standard, excuse me, our standard for a single-family lot is that we require, if there's on-street parking available, they're required to have a minimum two off-street spaces. They can be in a garage, they can be in a driveway, as long as they meet our dimensional standards. If there's not on-street parking, then we require four spaces. Again, it can be a driveway, it can be a garage, but that's the, that's the standard for, for single-family residential districts.
Thank you. So I've got Mr. Stites and then Mr. Ohm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if we can have two criteria. Can we have a existing criteria where if it's a non-conforming that we have now, maybe we don't have that parking requirement? But if we're, somebody's going to build a new one, they do have that parking requirement? Is that something that we can?
As I understand, the way that we're, the way that we're looking at it is, what we're looking at right now is for anything new. So it's not, it's not necessarily what would, what would be going to someone who's existing already.
Mr. Ohm and then Ms. Nosler Beck.
I think on the lines of parking, you know, perhaps, I know this is a unique situation. Perhaps we could have some type of, like a compromise or, or the, you know, the, the planning staff could look at, you know, each property a little bit differently. I fortunately have a big driveway and I could park several vehicles on it. But there are areas in Wheat Ridge, and even in District Two, where there's just a single. And so I don't think it could be a one-size-fits-all. I think where, I think what would be reasonable is if, you know, I have a lot such that I could provide an extra vehicle, so be it. If it's a situation where the property has a, perhaps a single driveway, then that would maybe not, maybe that wouldn't be a requirement. It's really about, I think what the concerns are, is really trying to fit the character of the neighborhood. I, I think if we could add any type of off-street parking, it would go a long way to the surrounding neighbors and residents. Thank you.
Ms. Nosler Beck, online.
Am I muted still?
No, you're good.
Great. I'm unmuted to tell you that, Mayor, you asked my question and so did you, Councilmember Stites. Thank you.
Thank you. Just the way the brain works. Okay, Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you. I think it is important to have off-street parking. Most people who rent, they, there's a couple people who are at least together. And we know by the high-rise at 38th and Uppam, there are cars parking in the school parking lot. There's, not every neighborhood has parking on the street. So I think it's important if they're going to have an accessory dwelling unit, that they do provide parking off the street so that the cars just aren't starting to line up. Thank you.
Ms. Hulteen?
So I'd like to go ahead and ask for consensus that we move forward with requiring off, one off-street parking, is that, Ms. Hoppe, what? Wait, wait, I'm not, but wait, there's more. That we require one off-street parking and then also give directive to staff to bring back some options on some flexible models when we're looking specifically at our existing ADUs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so our next question is about requiring owner occupancy for an ADU. I'd like to ask for a consensus that we do require that. Sorry, the next topic is whether or not we require owner occupancy for an ADU. And I am seeking consensus on it because every other community does require that, but I'm seeing, Ms. Dozeman looks like she'd like to.
So I just want a little bit of clarity on that because for like short-term rentals, we allow for a owner-occupied home with, with an STR and then a non-owner-occupied home with an STR. So if somebody in our community had a rental and had a long-term renter in one unit and then a short-term rental in the other unit, they wouldn't, that, that would not be allowed. Yeah, I don't know how I feel about that.
Just to clarify, our, our recommendation is that if there were to be ADUs allowed, that one of the two units be owner-occupied. So it doesn't have to be the primary, it could be the ADU, but one of the two is owner-occupied.
That's, yeah, that's.
That's our recommendation.
That's, that's common.
Yeah. I know that Scott was speaking, that, you know, some communities along Front Range are on their second or third iteration of, of ordinances in this regard. And I know that Jefferson County had previously required both to be owner-occupied and no one built ADUs because that was too onerous. It's complicated, but it's got a lot to do with whether you could get financing for it if all of them were required to be owner-occupied.
Okay, so I'd like to ask for a consensus that we require at least. Okay, so I'd like to ask for a consensus that we require at least one of the units be owner-occupied.
Okay.
Okay, the next topic is ADU size restriction. I'm going to just first ask if anyone has any discussion points on this, because this has...
Ms. Hoppe?
Yeah, I do. I actually did quite a bit of research today and did some math, so there's a, there's a lot of different, the communities around us do, do this ADU size restriction differently. It varies a lot. What I'm looking at is actually, I think, was the last page, it's attachment two, it's the last page of the packet, the graph. So I started looking at, what I did is I went online to see what homes were for sale in District 1, and to see what their square footage size was, and then ran the 40%. So there's a lot that are like not to exceed 40% of the primary home, and then there are some that are like not to exceed 30% of the primary home and 50%. So I ran some square footage numbers, and then I had a discussion with my husband, as most of you know, we owned the construction company for 18 years, and he built several ADUs down in West Denver. So a two-car garage, it's typically 400 to 450 square feet is what you're getting if you're building an ADU on top of a two-car garage. A one-car garage, you're getting anywhere from 200 to 250 square feet if you're building it on top of your garage. And then not building in a garage and just building a standalone unit to get a two-bedroom, so like some of these have a maximum of two bedrooms, some of them have a maximum of one bedroom, is 700 to 800 square feet, you can get a decent-sized AD, a decent, well-planned ADU in that. So as I did some of the, some of the math, you know, we have two-bedroom, two-bath homes in Wheat Ridge that are 732 square feet, and 40% of that, if, if the restriction was not to exceed 40% of the primary structure, would only be 292 square feet. So, and realistically, if you're, if you're building something, you really want to be able to be for, at least at like 400 square feet, so, or close to 400 square feet. So that same house that's for sale for 732 square feet, at 50%, they would only be able to build a 366-square-foot ADU. One can assume this is probably on one of our smaller lots, so it would definitely have to be something that had to go above their garage. But what I, what I suggest, this is my suggestion, is that I think that we should do our ADU size restriction at 50%, not to exceed 50% of the primary structure, up to 1,000 square feet total. And so here's another example of, and this is also in District 1, but it's a three-bed, two-bath, and it's 3,386 square feet. 50% of that would be an ADU of 1,693 square feet. So that's why I think it's important that we have both pieces, a maximum of 1,000 square feet, and then we say 50%, not to exceed 50% of the primary structure. I actually kind of wanted to go 60%, but I debated a lot today and decided to suggest 50%. So my suggestion for that is 50% of the primary structure, not to exceed 1,000 square feet.
Ms. Hultein, and then Ms. Weaver.
Thank you. Before going into all the fabulous calculus that Ms. Hoppe has, how much, it seems to me, especially if we're talking about detached, that we start to run into some of the like restrictions on how much of the lot coverage there can be, and I'm just wondering if Scott or Ken can kind of speak to, you know, how that, how we kind of rub up against the lot size versus what we're looking at for like our calculations for allowable size.
I think lot size will continue to be a limiting factor, especially for some of those lots that are already pretty tight. So, I don't know, I mean, we put height, and there is a possibility of allowing potentially dwelling units above existing garages or that sort of thing, and that kind of gets rid of the building coverage factor, because you're repurposing an existing structure, you're not actually adding footprint or lot coverage. But yeah, I mean, you know, R1C, for example, most of District 1 is limited at 40%, same at R3, so that will always be a factor, and that would be a factor if someone wanted to build a detached garage as well. So it's not just limited to ADUs, it would be any sort of addition or detached structure, that, that's a limiting factor for sure.
Ms. Weaver?
If I could just add...
Ken, go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor, thank you. I would add a couple things to that, just, it may inform what type of an ADU they choose to, choose to build, right? Because I think, we think lot coverage still matters in terms of, you know, neighborhood character. So, two comments. One, you know, maybe that means they're doing a pop-top of the garage, right, to get a small ADU on top of their garage versus a standalone structure, and there is still always, you know, the variance opportunities. So that, you know, ADUs would be eligible to make application for a lot coverage variance, possibly, possibly as well.
Ms. Weaver?
I really appreciate both comments. I really appreciate what Ms. Hoppe said, and I would add, I would ask that we add that, like in my case, I had an 800-square-foot house and then built an addition, but I mostly live in the addition, and so that, that one could have the, the new structure be their primary residence if they chose to then make the accessory dwelling unit the original smaller house. I, maybe that's assumed, but I just wanted to say that out loud, because you brought up that, that exact point.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you. I just have a question about building on top of the garage. I know a lot of houses have bedrooms up above the garage and things. What's the issue of carbon monoxide when you build above a garage? I hear it's out there.
It's, it's a good question, Ms. Hutchinson. I can't speak specifically to the carbon monoxide, but I know that if you're going to have habitable living space above a garage, that there's going to be certain fire separation requirements, which, you know, is, is there for principally fire safety, because there's, you know, something more combustible in the, in the first floor than, than would normally be the case. But in, in terms of odors or carbon monoxide, I think, I can't speak to that, I just know that there, there is a building code requirement for additional fire separation.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Weaver, and then Ms. Hoppe.
Just another quick question. Is there a minimum? A minimum?
Minimum size?
A minimum size, yes. And does it bump into the tiny home stuff?
That's not super common. I think a lot of minimum size for dwelling units is dictated by the building code. There's got to be, right, like a certain square footage for a bedroom, certain square, like clearance, I don't know what that is, but at some point, the building code wouldn't allow you to build smaller than a certain size. I just don't know what that number is.
Ms. Hoppe?
Oh, I'd like to ask for consensus to have our ADU size restrictions to be 50% of the primary home, not to exceed 1,000 square feet.
Okay, we have consensus on that.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? That, so some communities choose to also have different restrictions when they're basement units, because that's kind of following the existing footprint of a house. Would this same-size restriction potentially apply to a basement unit, which may actually be the same size? I guess that would be 50%, but I don't know. I'm just trying to clarify whether that's specific to a detached or if it's also involving a detached or above-floor ADU.
That's, that's a really good question, because the house, the house I'm in is exactly the same square footage.
Yeah, if, and so, it does say if attached must be less than primary unit, but can, so let's say, let's look at Golden, for example. They say not to exceed 50% of primary or 800 square feet, whichever is less. If attached must be less than primary unit but can be over 800 square feet, so I guess we could put in there saying if, well, see, if attached could also, yeah, so I guess we could just do a basement carve-out.
Yeah, like if there's a basement in a 1,200-square-foot house, that's over 1,000 square feet, but theoretically, there could be 1,200 square feet of living space down there now.
Right.
Like, how would that?
Could we just, did the basement?
What?
Just accept basements.
Yeah, except basements.
Is there as consensus for that, though?
Okay.
Okay, our next topic is height. Does anyone have any discussion items on height that they would like to? This is kind of all over the place, so...
I just think that 25 feet is, is a reasonable amount, and that's, especially if we're talking, if it's a standalone unit, I would hope that it wouldn't even be as big as 25 feet, but if we're don't go on above a garage, then 25 feet allows, allows for that. So that's why I think 25 feet.
And just to clarify, all of this would be subjected to all the existing height restriction setbacks, all of, I mean, I know it's an obvious yes, but...
Yes, although current, because we don't allow ADUs, our current accessory building height standards are much lower than 25 feet, maximum of 15 feet for a garage and 10 feet for sheds, so it would be a change to the code in that you would be allowing a specific carve-out for accessory dwelling units to exceed the existing accessory building height, but that would then allow for that unit to be built above an existing garage that would currently be between 10 to 15 feet tall. So, yes, otherwise, it would, all buildings have to meet the setback requirements for the zone districts, unless you chose for those to be different.
So I'd like to ask for a consensus of a 25-foot height restriction.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we're almost, we're almost there. Now I am seeking a consensus that we limit the number allowed per lot to one.
Sorry, I didn't understand that.
Sorry. I'm reading off the chart here, that I'm seeking a consensus that we limit the number allowed per lot to one. One, one per lot.
One ADU per lot.
One ADU per lot, sorry.
Okay.
I want to...
So, and it looks like Val wants to say something about that.
Okay, Ms. Noslerbeck?
I have a question about that, because if you have a separate garage that isn't, are we limiting this to, you know, one ADU? I think we need to be pretty specific with that, so that you can still have other buildings potentially on your lot, whether that's a shed or garage.
So I think that would be a separate allowance altogether. This is specific to number of accessory dwelling units per lot.
Okay.
And I just wanted to bring up that perhaps something, you know, some of those larger lots could have detached ADU, and then also could have like a basement ADU, which would be an attached. And we did do with the STRs, we did, you could have one which was homeowner-occupied and one that was not homeowner-occupied, and so, so my suggestion would be that we do an allowed number of two, one detached and one attached.
Ms. Hutchinson?
I think one, period. That's what all the other cities have done, so, that's what I think. Thanks.
Mr. Stites?
I think at some point, your property then goes from your dwelling unit that you're trying to stay in forever to you're trying to make a bunch of money by packing a bunch of people into your own property, so I think one is probably enough.
Ms. Hoppe?
Yeah, and I just, you know, in the, in the memo, the, the AARP, one of their recommendations was to allow for more than one ADU on larger lots in denser zones, so like two ADUs per single-family lot, one attached and one detached was the AARP's suggestion, along with the maximum of the 25 feet and that kind of stuff. So that's, that's why I brought that up.
Okay, I'd like to ask for a consensus that we limit one per lot, one ADU per lot limit.
Okay, we have consensus on that.
Yep. All right, the last one is, are we going to put a limit on the total number of ADUs? Not per lot, but across the city or other restrictions. And, all right, so I'd like to ask for a consensus that we are not going to limit the total number of ADUs. All right, consensus reached.
Okay. Will we be able to allow motorhomes to be an ADU?
No.
And what, how would we not regulate that, or what, we're just, in particular, or...
Yeah, so, a question also came up regarding tiny homes. Are, you know, we have this whole separate section on RVs, and they're not allowed to be occupied.
Okay.
So that would not be absent, an amendment to that section of the code, those would not be allowed to be an ADU.
Okay.
Similarly, with tiny homes, we, you, you did, in adopting 2018 building codes, you adopted the, I'm not going to remember what appendix it was, but the, the tiny home appendix. And so you could do tiny homes in the city from a building code standpoint, and, and that makes basically gives some flexibility in terms of egress requirements from, from sleeping rooms and some of the size requirements that Scott mentioned, they can't be on wheels, right? So once they have wheels, you know, they, they're, they're not, they're, they're not allowed in our regular environment, because they're considered RVs, so...
Can you jack them up, take the wheels off, and?
They'd have to be on a foundation, they potentially have to have full utilities.
But a tiny home not on wheels could potentially be an accessory dwelling unit as well.
I agree, it could.
Okay.
So...
And then would the legislation be specific about what requirements would be minimum requirements in terms of bathing and kitchen and those types of facilities?
Yeah, so the regular building code has minimum size requirements in residential units for the size of living space, the size of sleeping rooms, and, you know, to the extent, how many people can actually sleep in those sleeping quarters based on the size of the room. The tiny home is really a carve-out that, that reduces some of those requirements. So we did adopt that appendix, so you would have some flexibility to create an ADU that's, you know, presumably detached, that would be able to take advantage of those reductions in some of those size requirements.
Okay. Ms. Hutchinson? Thank you.
About the motorhomes, okay, a lot of people are traveling now. Is it okay to have, people have company that, you know, come from somewhere else and they have a motorhome and they pull in your driveway?
I don't believe so, or there's a time limit, like 72 hours or something that may not, do you know?
Oh, I thought, I thought it was under camping. I think it's like 30 days before it has to move. Like you can camp. I, I...
Not, not on a public street, though?
No, no, not on a public street, but in someone's driveway.
Even the driveway, I don't think you can.
The, the only carve-out is that you can get a permit to park them on the street for a certain number of days, but they're still not allowed to be occupied.
So are motorhomes or trailers allowed to be parked just in driveways?
Yes.
And be seen on the street?
Yes, so long as they're on the proper parking surface. Can't just be on grass or dirt, it's got to be on pavement or rock or stone, pavers.
Okay.
Mr. Ohm?
So one question, was the, do you know what the historic reason why people were not allowed to be in RV? Was it a life safety with winter or something to that effect, or...
Not allowed to occupy the RV?
Yeah, what was the, at some point, City Council decided that that shouldn't be allowed. I'm just wondering, was that based on like insulating factors, life safety?
I, I can't speak to it. I mean, it's been on the books for, I think about 20 years at least.
Okay, let me circle back to our sort of original topic. We've kind of got a two-pronged bill, right, being able to, to bring ADUs sort of into, that are existing into compliance on some sort of a timetable, and then, and then ultimately the, the... a timetable and then ultimately the regulations that we're proposing. So the legislation would have a scheme to bring the existing units into compliance. Okay? Is there further discussion that we need to have on this matter before we move to another one? And on, all right, thank you very much. Good discussion? Does that give you, does that give you what you need?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Excelente. So, all right, let's go to agenda item number three. We've gotten through two of them pretty handily, thank you. This is staff reports, start with Mr. Goll.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This should be fairly quick, but we sent an email to city council, I believe last week, or a couple different emails. First, an update on the COVID situation in Colorado, which if you looked at it or if you've been watching the news, you know it's really bad. But then we sent a follow-up email. Mayor Potem and I spoke about what council would like to do with future meetings, would you like to consider going back to virtual, at least through maybe the holidays until we get our COVID numbers down or continue with in-person meetings with mask? Discuss.
Okay. Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am fine to go either way. I'll do whatever everybody else wants to do. So I'm down, I'm okay with going virtual. I still have to bring myself to this building because my Wi-Fi is terrible, or if I bring myself to this building and you guys are in the room. So I'm good with you either way.
Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you. I am in favor of going virtual. I've been, I haven't been, this is about as most cautious as I've been feeling about COVID since it hit. I know more people who are vaccinated, who have caught COVID than I know. I know at least twice as many people who have caught COVID fully vaccinated than have not. And I think with increased indoorsness and the holidays, I think limiting exposure both for ourselves and our community members, I would fully support going to virtual format until we feel like it's better conditions.
Additional discussion. Mr. Ohm?
Thank you. I'm kind of either way. If the majority really wants to go virtual, that's fine. I generally, you know, look at what the CD-PhD is recommending. I understand that, you know, it sounds like there's roughly an 81% of the infections are from non-vaccinated people. So I'm, you know, if the majority feels that we want to go, you know, virtual, that's fine. I won't have to wear the mask, so that, I guess that's an upside. But either way, thank you.
Ms. Nosler back?
I just wanted to use this evening as an example of how it can work to keep moving forward the way that we have been. I really appreciate us being able to meet and the entire council has been really, and staff, really staff, has made it possible for us to feel safe when we're meeting in person. But I would say that in this time leading up to the holidays, as more people are gathering, whereas when we first discussed moving back to in-person and if we should allow for people to zoom in, we were saying it needs to be some pretty extenuating circumstances that you're not just zooming in for any reason. I think we should maybe loosen the, you know, kind of culture around that right now. And for any council member that feels like they would rather stay home, we can do it virtually, but for those that would like to attend in person, they can. That's what I would like to see moving forward.
Ms. Hoppy?
I guess I just would also like to remind us that around that conversation, though, it was really important that everybody was like, it's really important that we're either all Zoom or all live. And so I would like to really keep that in mind also, that if it's just loosey-goosey and we don't know who's showing up in person, we still have, you know, we have staff people that we have to consider, like do they need to always have to show up in person? And maybe some of us show up, maybe one of us, me, shows up? Like, so I think it needs to be all one way or the other. Right now, I hear one, one virtual, two, we'll go however anybody else wants to go. And I think that we should just kind of vote and then decide how we want to do, or not vote, we should make a consensus, sorry, study session, and then see where we want to go with that.
Ms. Hutchinson?
I go for going virtual, but that's just because I read a lot and I'm very concerned about what's going on. So it is true that people are getting COVID who've been vaccinated. So it's, it is a concern for me and as it gets colder, we don't have ventilation either, don't open doors and things. It's just a safety thing for me and I'm the oldest one here. Thanks.
Yeah, we'll see. This, Mr. Ohm, this Hulteen, and then Ms. Weaver.
So my last comment is just, if we're considering going virtual because of our concerns, do we need to extenuate that mandate to the city, to our citizens as well?
Question for Mr. Goll. Are you, Councilmember, are you speaking about city facilities not having the city hall open, basically, kind of thing? Or you mean, in council meetings?
I'm saying just, you know, if our concern is about our health and the health of our citizens, do we also need to consider the entire city a mask mandate?
Oh. Yeah, and just, if I can, Councilmember Dozeman, we have a meeting, I believe tomorrow, with the governor's office and the CD-PhD. And the state may be considering, and I'm not saying they're considering that, but they may be considering some statewide restrictions, I think, don't know what. And I think it's just an open discussion at this point. So I think we'll know more this week on what the state, and maybe the health, I think the Jeffco Health also has a board meeting this week, sorry.
I'd just say as a preference, I prefer to be in person. I think I get a lot more out of it. I feel there's a lot more engagement as far as like council members go, although we did have pretty good participation among residents online. But I would agree that it's kind of like an all-or-nothing situation. But if we, as the leaders within the city, are saying that we don't feel comfortable meeting in person, are we going to extend that to our board and commission meetings? Are we going to start shutting down some of our facilities and mandating masks again? I can say, like I think for most of us, we've all been vaccinated and at some point, we're all getting our boosters. I know I just got mine. And we're all wearing masks. If we maybe are meeting in this format, and I know that's hard with voting, but we're all pretty widely spread out. So I would prefer to stay in person and maybe until state restrictions come out.
Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the considerations that I'm thinking about, and I actually, just to be clear, I vastly prefer to meet in person. I feel like I get more out of the discussions. But I'm also reminded, like when we meet in person, there, you know, there's a whole host of staff and other support people who also need to meet with us too. So, you know, we have some flexibility, as Ms. Nosler Beck is demonstrating tonight, that we as counselors, if we opt out for some reason and decide to come virtual, we still have other staff members who might have young kids and vulnerable family members. So I'm just sensitive to that. If we don't reach a consensus tonight to go virtual, I think it's, you know, we might find out pretty soon that it's a conversation we're having again very quickly. Part of why I wanted to bring it forward tonight is just being sensitive to the fact that we are going into the holiday season and we're going to be spending a lot more time with vulnerable family members. So if that's a consideration for council, this is a good time for us to address that. And if not, we will be meeting again and we will probably know more in a week. So I'll go ahead and ask for the consensus now. I'm going to seek a consensus that we switch to virtual meetings. All right, so we do not have that consensus. So we'll keep our ears open for other directives and when needed, we can revisit it.
Ms. Weaver, I had you on the call list.
Okay, well, we took the consensus, but I was just going to say that I'm happy to do-
Fair enough. This all may change tomorrow, so keep your ears open. Okay, we will go to elected officials' reports. Does anyone have a report for us tonight? All right, well, thank you very much. We had a great meeting. I want to thank Ms. Powers and our planning staff for being here. And if there's no more business, then we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.